All right. Good evening, everyone. This is the town of New Canaan Town Council Special Meeting. It's a public hearing. It is six thirty-five P M. It's Wednesday, May seventeenth. Penny, you want to call roll?
Sure. Robin Bates-Mason?
Here.
Rita Patino?
Here.
Tom Butterworth?
Here.
Mark Jmski?
Here.
Steve Carroll?
Here.
Luke Kaufman?
Here.
Mike Morrow?
On the way, bro.
Rianauta?
She's not gonna be here tonight.
Oh, she's not.
Kimberly Norton?
Here.
Hillary Orman?
Here.
Christina Ross? And a young here. Okay. We have fun.
Thank you. All right, minutes. Approval of the minutes for the reg- the following regular meeting. It's April nineteenth, twenty twenty-three, and the special meeting of May third, twenty twenty-three. Are there any additions, deletions, corrections? Anybody have anything? That is extremely unusual. Are you sure?
Did you read them?
Okay.
No, we don't have to answer that question.
All right, they are approved by unanimous consent. Thank you very much. Item number three. Public hearing. Public hearing on proposed changes to the town code as follows. A ordinance regarding the reinstatement of the Utilities Commission. C Exhibit A, and then B Amendments to the Affordable Housing Committee Ordinance Exhibit B. So this is the public hearing part of our meeting, so we will ask members of the public to sign in. We've got a sign-in sheet here. We'll take comments from the public, both in the meeting as well as Zoom. So those of you in the audience that want to sign up to comment, please sign in. And then we'll call our first speaker up. Let me grab that. Not like we have a packed house on this one, so we'll probably get through this pretty quick. Ah, there you go. All right.
Who's there?
Sven England. Sven, thanks for coming out.
No problem, Steve. Always happy to. Sven England, nine thirty, driving to Canaan. I just wanted to come up tonight and say you guys are doing the right thing, all my old colleagues and friends. You're doing the right thing in reestablishing the Public Utilities Commission. You know my history, you know, as a volunteer fireman for many decades, including times served as the Assistant Chief. And numerous times when I've been, you know, the line officer in charge of a situation. I want to say that our town has been experiencing more prolonged and more severe storms which have placed communication, wired communication technology in the road, and it's sometimes taken, you know, many days and in some cases over a week in order to reestablish that communications infrastructure. What I want to say is that I believe that a wireless infrastructure is a means of public safety because the public needs a means to be able to get a hold of nine-one-one emergency dispatch, even when the wires are in the road. We've had situations like that. We all know about them. I don't want to go into them in any more detail, but from a public safety point of view, this is extremely important, and thank you very much for taking this up and making this happen for our town.
Thank you, Sven. Hey, before you leave the podium there, we were joking before that Sven's ready to retire for for good, and we have a saying in this town, if you retire, it won't take five minutes to get a job. We got you before you retired. So, you know, we've got, we're gonna, we're gonna get you working probably harder than you were in the real world. So thank you for stepping up and raising your hand.
Well, Steve, you know.
Already done enough for New Canaan, but you're gonna do some more, so, because we need you.
You know, you know, to quote the movie, Round Up the Usual Suspects, and this is the beginning of a good friendship.
Thank you, Sven. Thank you, Sven. All right, Kathleen Corbett has signed up as well. Kathleen? Yeah, wherever you want, wherever there's a hot mic.
Just a few brief comments. I'm Kathleen Corbett, member of the Board of Selectmen. I just want to thank you. Really, this is what it's really all about, the hard work that you've put in in helping to reestablish the Utilities Commission. I'm most grateful for it, but really I think the community at large is is very grateful for that. I have shared with you and the Board of Selectmen, I proposed candidate pool list, and I'll just summarize it if I may. First of all, you challenged us to come up with, instead of five candidates, nine. And while there was a little bit of a startled with that, we, it was hap- happy to announce that we actually have a wonderful list of candidates here. Three, actually, that you know, former and seasoned town council members, and six new people who are very, all have a great varying degrees of experience. Two are actually in the audience with us tonight, showing their level of interest. And really feel really great about this. So five Republicans, two Democrats, and two unaffiliated. But these individuals will leave like you guys do, hopefully most of the time, you know, leave your political hat at the door, and you're really here to discuss what the needs are of our community with respect to utilities. Certainly cellular service is going to be at the top of that list, but other things as well. And there's a really, it's going to be about how they prioritize and kind of think about what what public utilities they need to consider for our town. We'd like to get this started, so June, once you approve, hopefully that'll be this evening. And June the sixth, the Board of Selectmen will approve the final list of candidates. And with maybe just putting a marker on June the twentieth, which happens to be a Tuesday, and then we've just looked ahead at the following, was, is it the third Tuesday of the month? Something like that. There's a, trying to just establish a cadence in terms of appointments. Once the commission is formed, they can pick their dates, but we just sort of wanted to get it started before the summer really took place. So we're maybe at June twentieth, but that's just a, putting a pencil mark in the calendar. Does anybody have any questions about the proposed?
Yes, I, I don't know. So the procedure is the town council approves the entire list?
No, 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 this is the Board of Selectmen approves the list. I'm just sharing it with you, just so you know where we are. You challenged us to get nine members, and I think we have nine members. It has to be approved by the Board of Selectmen.
Okay, great. So I was just curious if you could talk a little bit about the members and how you, you know, how many people applied and there's lots of different people on here, and if you can say anything about their views about what's gone on so far?
So what's, what the process has been so far, it mostly has come from interested members of our community unsolicited. Just when we've been public about the reformation of the Utilities Commission, and so we've got a lot of interest from individuals who sent us their levels of their memos of of interest as well as their CVs. We then followed up with a series of interviews, each of us separately. And in some cases, the RTC and the DTC also interviewed these candidates and put their recommendations first. I want to thank them for that. But not everybody was an R R R D, so they went through just the process directly through the Board of Selectmen. Some people have withdrawn their their names, and so through the process, I think what we've put together is, and some people, there was just not the right fit or what have you, so. And I'm going to be reaching out to all those people because I have to say without question, everybody was worthy of a seat on this commission. And I think that they would certainly be a great bench for people and positions that are opening up in the future, so.
So these are the only candidates that did not drop out?
No, these are the candidates that we selected based on the interviews, and this is a combination, and it hasn't been approved yet, so it's, that won't take place. So so there's still some things in the, in the sort of pipeline that has to transfer that will go forward, but right now this is the 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 list of the nine candidates.
So so my question, thank you for explaining that. I appreciate that and for all your work. So my question is, is when they were interviewed, what is their feelings about the current policies that have gone on? Because I'm sure that came up, because they're motivated to be on the commission, and I would think you have a a different, you know, everyone has a different opinion, but I'm just curious how how the committee selection worked to balance that out.
So I think it's a, it's a combination of, you know, not everybody is actually is, has been following the, what's happening with the cell towers in the proximity next to a neighbor's yard or at the school. So it's really looking for people who can be impartial, who want to do the research, find the data, make sure they understand market demand, et cetera. And so that's the kind of, you know, sort of qualifications that we're looking for is is not coming with just their own agenda, but really a background that I think would be suitable for a Utilities Commission, and also a level of interest that would do the research that frankly, many of you have all done in terms of your early days with establishing whether or not we go forward with a cell tower. So that's the work that the Utilities Commission can now take on, as it's right now dormant. And so I think this is a great opportunity to consider all of the issues and and make a recommendation.
So so we don't know who on the committee favors the current proposal?
I, I, everybody's walking in with a new fresh set of eyes and and hopefully an open mind.
Okay.
Yeah, there's a natural, yeah. And there's a natural selection process in terms of the balance of R's, D's, and U's. So that kind of, that will call the herd a little bit in terms of who can be on there, but I think we're at a point now with this list. I mean, this is a great list. Obviously, we gave the number of nine just a, you know, short time ago to be able to to fill this many spots. On top of the fact that we'll be looking for spots on the Affordable Housing Committee, and, you know, populating, I don't ever remember populating this, you know, getting this many people together at the same time to do different roles. It's it's really a a lot of work to 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 chase all these folks down, so.
Yeah, I'm just bringing it up because it's such a controversial issue. So and so many people are upset about it. I I just want to make sure that, like you said, that the people are unbiased and interested in doing research rather than pushing a specific agenda, you know.
I think like all of us who sit on boards and commissions, hopefully we have an open mind to listen to all sides before a decision is made.
And I think, and the genesis of putting this back into a Utilities Commission is so that everything is out in the open, all the meetings, all the correspondents, all that stuff is, you know, there'll be open meetings. Many people that want to go to these meetings, they're welcome to attend. So that was some of the complaint in the past, that it was all sort of done behind the scenes, and this will give, you know, a much much broader light to the, to the whole thing, so.
No, no, I I I think that's great, and I thank you for all your work. I just want to make sure they start off with more of a blank slate than pushing a specific agenda, so that that's my only hope.
I hope we all do that on every board and commission. Yes, thank you. Thank you.
All right, any other questions? Or Kathleen?
Thank you for all, I know it's a lot of work, so thank you for everything that you've done.
The collaborative effort, so thank you.
Thank you, Kathleen. All right, anybody out in Zoom land there that has a, let's see, a hand up? Okay. All right. Yeah, so it's six forty-seven. Do we have to adjourn this part of the meeting? No, okay. So one thing, Tucker, you mentioned, are are the interns on at all, so we can introduce those guys? Are they?
Don't see any. We invited them to join. You know, their hours are really daytime.
Yeah, okay.
Wanted to join.
Yeah, well, if 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 they're on, we'll introduce them after the Pledge of Allegiance, but we've got our scouts here, and I think we're ready to roll on the, on the plan, so we'll do that next. All right. Uh, let's see. Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Thank you, Penny. Yeah, sorry, we're getting ahead of ourselves. Members, yeah, there we go. All right, so actually, Tom, let me kick it to you. Do you want to, you want to?
Or Hillary.
Or Hillary, or Hillary. Hillary, you want to do it?
Sure.
You guys have worked hard on this, so.
You want me to introduce the amendments?
Yeah, just the, just read the part that's.
Just to the Affordable Housing one or to the Utilities?
Let's go, let's go Utilities first.
Okay. So the proposed amendments to the Utilities Commission ordinance are as follows to, and what we'll be approving hopefully later tonight. Section twelve point two, and and Tucker, I believe, who said, who put forth this agenda, thank you. Helpfully put them in italics and bold for everybody to follow along, but I'll read them into the record. Section twelve point two, the last sentence of that paragraph now reads, "The minority representation requirements of Connecticut General Statutes, Section nine dash one-six-seven A shall apply." And in the next section, section twelve dash three, "Appointment in Terms of Office" is now amended. Point one, point A one, "Three Members to Serve Until July first, twenty twenty-five." And A three now reads, "Three Members to Serve Until July first, twenty twenty-seven." And finally, section twelve dash three, the same section, Part C, which is at the top of page four of the agenda, is stricken. So those are the, oh, sorry, one more amendment. My bad. Section twelve point four, "Organization." The, the number nine, or the word nine, is added to the first sentence, so it now reads promptly after the initial nine members of the Utilities Commission are sworn in, and then it continues with the rest of the sentence. So those are the amendments to the Utilities Commission ordinance.
It needs to be in the, in the twelve dash two as well, not acknowledge nine members.
Oh, it is. Sorry, I need to acknowledge. Okay, section twelve dash two, the second sentence now reads, "The Utilities Commission shall be composed of nine members appointed by the Board of Selectmen." That edit is in there as well. Thank you, Penny.
All right.
Those are the amendments to the Utilities Commission and the Affordable Housing Committee ordinance, which was also updated. Need to look back. Oh, boy, I need to get my eyes checked. Okay, section four A dash one. Point A. The second sentence now reads, the minor, again, "The Minority Representation Requirements of Connecticut General Statutes, Section nine dash one-six-seven A shall apply." And the next sentence is stricken. And section four A dash one, Part B, Point one now reads, "Three Members to Serve Until July first, twenty twenty-five." B two, sorry? B two, "Three Members to Serve Until July first, twenty twenty-six." B three reads, "Three Members to Serve Until July first, twenty twenty-seven." And the next section, starting with "Provided," is stricken. And section C, or Point C, is also stricken. Anything else? Bold. Seeing no more. That, that's the end of the amendments.
Thank you, Hillary. And just to remind everybody, the reason we, we had to do this this way is whenever you have an alteration on an ordinance that significantly changes it, we legally have to post it again. Unfortunately, we had to post it again and pay. How much, Tucker? Twenty-nine hundred dollars a shot, so that part of it is, that part of it is heartbreaking. So anyway.
Let us hope that Hartford's legislators finally pass it, that it doesn't have to be in a paper, in a newspaper with wide circulation.
So wondering if the paper was delivered by horse and buggy. All right. We have a late.
Can I make one comment before you're concerned? I just want to note, the deletion of of C, the the first selectman is by statute in Connecticut, a ex officio member, every board, commission, and committee, whether or not I vote can be determined by ordinance, so that's not the it's not the case that I'm not officious, I am by statute, so.
Right.
Thank you, Kevin. Yeah, and I think Kevin helped actually with the, with the editing of the language the last time, so. This is definitely a group effort, so thank you all. All right, so late edition, we have Mark Ta- Mark Tabner out there in Zoom land. Mark, you've got the floor.
How's it going? I'm a, I'm just one of the interns. I just heard I got mentioned earlier, but I just want to say I'm here, and it's nice to meet everybody.
Hey, Mark, how are you? Welcome. Tell us about yourself.
I'm a student at the high school. I'm a senior. I'm going to the University of Georgia next year, and I'm interning with the, like, sort of hybrid between the First Selectmen Finance and Human Resources Department. So I'll be at Town Hall till June ninth.
That's great. Thank you for doing that. That's a, you'll learn a lot in those areas, for sure. There's a lot.
Yeah, I'm really excited.
Good. Welcome aboard. Thank you. All right. Yeah, so now we're gonna do our pledge finally, so thirty-one, come on up. Our, our agenda says Cub Scouts. Obviously, that's wrong.
We were Cub Scouts.
Yeah.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the public, on the six hands.
Guys, want to take a minute and tell us what's going on?
Boy Scouts from three thirty-one, just coming to see a town meeting, to see what you guys are doing here. And want to hear like about, you know, the issues that are discussed here and like what goes on during town meetings.
A big part of Boy Scouts is trying to understand the community and how that works, and I think we thought it would be a good experience to experience and see.
Thank you.
And it's part of America Bench, and I would please understand that there are some internships available here, and these guys will tell the rest of the truth about that on Monday when we meet next.
That's great.
Great, awesome.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks for being here.
Appreciate it.
All right. Well, we're pretty close to kickoff time anyway. It's five or seven, so let's move right into First Selectmen's update, Kevin.
Good evening. See you all. As you know, the COVID emergency ended last Thursday, both state and federal. Really just means federal dollars are stopping to flow. But I wanted to remind everyone that our Health Department continues to vaccinate those over sixty-five. Few people got COVID last week at the Lincoln Reagan Dinner, so. Every, every event, and if you're over sixty-five or over eighty-five or over ninety-five, I suggest you get vaccinated.
But if you had it, you don't get vaccinated for ninety days. You're already immune.
I'll give you a brief update on Capitol Projects. I've been over to see the wave of new bathrooms, which are coming along nicely. Should be open, finished by mid-June. The LAPM C H P machine is installed and sitting there waiting for EverSource to bring gas into the park, which is hard for the course with EverSource. Not to criticize utilities, but utilities always don't do what one would do. The PD renovation, as you know, is moving along as far as the plan. It's probably sixty percent design now as far as construction drawings, and they moved to thirty-nine locusts as being planned, and we've approved contracts for the, for that, for the renovation of the somewhat renovation to make it acceptable for the police to operate in. Two-twenty elm renovation for Board of Education is moving along for their planned move in August. The playoffs, as you know, we selected Hobbs after considering three firms. And Hobbs has met with a kickoff meeting and a couple of meetings and is working well to review the plan and review the the HVAC, and so that, that is all moving along as you suggested. The Department of Justice settlement with the, on the ADA matters is reaching a successful conclusion. Tiger, is Tiger on? Tiger could address that more following up on his executive session presentation to you a month ago, so, and Chris Shipper is here tonight on behalf of the Conservation Commission to tell you about the eleven-twenty-four Valley Road House, Group's House, which the Conservation Commission is going to be recommending that the town contribute toward that transaction. The process has to start with the Board of Selectmen and then go to the Town, Board of Finance, to the Town Council. I'll let Chris elaborate on that, but we're very happy that the First Taxing District of Norwalk wanted to improve relations with the town, and we have done so, so. That's very satisfying. The NUCO program continues to work very well. As you know, the Community Foundation is well on the road to raising five hundred thousand dollars toward behavioral health, and they're going to contribute something toward the second year of the NUCO program. Town of Weston has joined. I may have mentioned that before. We still hope that Town of Darien and Town of Wilton would join, but we're moving along into the second year financed and very, very pleased with the progress. As we discussed yesterday morning at the Board of Selectmen meeting, people need to be prepared for the shutdown of Metro North two weeks from yesterday for the summer and probably into September, maybe into October. We met this morning with the First Selectwoman and and Town Minister Darien to ask for their cooperation. Because we don't want Darien commuters to be ticked off to have New Canaan people taking all their parking spaces. So we have some cooperation working. We're going to come out with a communication piece to commuters. We have about a thousand commuters that currently leave either New Canaan or Talmanch Hill, then all New Canaan residents. We have Westchester residents, Wilton residents, North Stanford, North Norwalk, so for a thousand people, we're going to have to figure out how to get to the train, other than on the Metro North bus. Metro North will provide buses, but the the time from leaving New Canaan to Grand Central can be an hour forty-five to two hours. That's not really an acceptable commute time. So we are we've located probably five or six hundred parking spaces that are available in South Norwalk, Stanford, Darien Station, and Neuroton Heights. We just have to educate our commuters how to find them and decide where they want to park. We are also exploring with with Boxcar, which currently has one hundred and forty Boxcar customers with spaces at San Alawishus and Talmanch Hill. They have actually several hundred Boxcar customers that use the spaces from time to time. It's not always the same people, but we're exploring with them having coach, private coaches going from Talmanch Hill to Neuroton Heights for a twenty-minute run rather than the Metro North buses. So we will be coming out with that announcement and trying to educate our commuters as much as possible. So I want to talk about it because it's really should be on top of mind if anybody commuting. And finally, as I sent you this afternoon, a little bit delayed, a suggestion that we repeal or replace chapter forty-four of the town code with respect to the personnel, which is actually nineteen-sixties language and very, very outdated. As you know, Steve, this has been on the agenda for the past few years, supported by the Ethics Board, and something I'll be happy to talk to the ordinance, so by law, it's an ordinance subcommittee about at a future meeting. So I I recommend you refer this to your sub, your committee. And that's what I have.
Great. Questions?
I have a question about the Playhouse. So Scott Hobbs or Mr. Hobbs has been working for the town. Is he still working for the town, or is his?
Yeah, Tiger's on for a full update.
Okay, so that'll, so he'll include the, okay, Mr. Hobbs, okay. Um, okay. Kevin, do we know why the Metro North is doing this long renovation, you know, why they're shutting down our trains? And I I read an article that on the Eastern Line and, you know, Eastern Connecticut, Metro North is changing their service considerably and starting to make the trains much less frequent, so.
I think that situation is entirely different than our branch line.
I I figured it was, but.
The, the whole reason why we're doing all this work on the, on the main line, which will be coming in the next year or two, is because of the federal infrastructure bill, which really literally gave Connecticut hundreds of millions of dollars to do train work. Which this was all done by Commissioner Giuletti before he, he moved on. And they're going to make, they're going to basically either replace or repair all the ties and improve the line so that it go faster, you know. The, the runtime to Grand Central used to be, when I was commuting, an hour and seven minutes. Now it's an hour and fifteen minutes. And that's partly because of the slo- slowness of the trains on the branch. But the, the main line is going to get a lot of improvements too, that's going to increase the speed on the main line, so.
Is that going to be shut down eventually too, so people?
They don't, they, they can never shut down the main line because Amtrak trains have to go through, and people have to have to commute, so they will shut down one, one. That's happening in Darien now, where they have ramps out to the, out to the other track. They can never shut down all, all tracks.
So, okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
Kevin, with Boxcar, is there any other towns that use Boxcar where there's reciprocal abilities for our commuters to use Boxcar in other communities, or does that?
Well, Darien has two pla- Boxcar places. Stanford, I believe, in New Jersey, they have, I think, forty locations.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering. I was wondering if there's, you know, shared.
And Boxcar now raises, runs a hundred and forty buses into Manhattan from New Jersey, so they're, they've really developed their business. Their business started as just looking for unused spaces at funeral homes or churches around. And that's why San Alawishus works so well, because it's eighty spaces that we didn't have to build right next to the train station. So.
But there, do you know if Darien has similar arrangement with Boxcar? Are they, they're?
Only for private lots. They have no interest in doing it for, our frustration is we've been doing reconnaissance at their, at their their lots, and some of their lots, especially post-COVID, are not full, and yet they have permits outstanding, and we we counted up, I think, a hundred and fifty spaces at least that could be used in their permit lots. And they want to consider. And they want to consider to continue to have them as permit lots and Boxcar would be more than willing to take like fifty spaces here and seventy-five spaces here and sign them as Boxcar spaces as we do at Talmud Hill. You know, we have, our public lots are partially Boxcar in, in Talmud Hill. It works very well. Darien doesn't like that idea for some reason, so.
I mean, it's revenue that's just hanging out there for them. You'd think they'd want to.
It's free money.
Yeah.
You know, if, if no one's parking there and someone else will want to park there and pay, it's free money, so.
Presumably they get money from the permits though too.
Yeah.
Probably more than they would get.
But any, any empty space still, you know, that, the way that works where the day of, if it's empty, fill it and, you know.
Yeah, maybe if we arrange to lose the next football game, they.
Well, we were kind of surprised we didn't get more cooperation today, but you know, I, I do, I do want to mention one thing. We, we were astounded today to realize South Norwalk at ten AM had two hundred and fifty spaces available in the garage. So South Norwalk for people who live on the eastern side of, of New Canaan will be a very, very good place to go.
I go into the city from South Norwalk. It's, it was my secret. Thanks. That, and they have a covered part. They have a tiered parking garage that you can park in.
Oh, yeah.
Covered, so it's actually quite nice.
And, and it's only ninety-nine dollars a month for a month, monthly pass.
It's not a bad train.
Not a bad at all. You know, kind of people don't think about South Norwalk, but it really.
Really close.
It'll work for, it'll work for commuting.
So is, who, who, oh, Robin, sorry, Robin, didn't see your hand.
You're right. Oh, sorry, Kevin, can you just give us an update? I, I saw the BOF meeting about twenty-eight Grove Street. Does the town have a renter in there or not?
No, we don't.
Are there any plans to have a renter or no? Or, and will the sixty thousand dollars be used for improvements or what's going on with the building?
We are in a stage where we're considering an alternative use and there are discussions going on about that, so I can't talk about it further because this kind of involves other private parties.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks, Robin. Just back, going back to the commuter question, is there, is there a way to put on the website any of this information?
Oh, we're going to communicate, communicate, communicate in the next two weeks.
You'll push that out.
We're going to actually try to have people on, on the train platforms to make sure they get flyers and understand their options.
Great. Sorry, great.
Does anybody have any other questions about the Metro North before I change the subject? Okay, just want to make sure we don't have to tie back to that. I have a question about the if before or maybe, you know, as an initial question before it gets kicked to bylaws and ordinances about this employee question. And I preface this as I used to, I used to litigate employment cases. So the whole at-will thing I could.
I think you and, you and Tom and Mike appreciate at-will versus this other term that I did.
That just called, right, that for cause. I mean, I've litigated this numerous times.
Yeah.
So, but my question is, how does, I don't quite get the link between, well, two questions. An initial question is whether we amend the ordinance or not, which I agree has some outdated pieces that would certainly update, but it, it's my understanding that it's in the charter that, that employees come before the Board of Selectmen.
Yeah, I think the language in the charter when it was written probably meant salaried employers or full-time employees. You know, you really can't take that charter provision and, and end up with labor law that is against the interests of the town. We need part-time employees to be at-will employees. And we make that very clear.
Understood, so that.
In the employee handbook they receive.
So that it leads into my second question, but first I, I think that there, we, we need to clarify because that's an interpretation of the charter, but we do need clarification as to whether, because if we amend the ordinance, but the charter would still require it, then we're going to do all this work if, and so that it would have to go before, it might have to go before the Charter Committee is all I'm saying. So we need to clarify that point first because.
In the meantime, in the meantime, we, we have employees that we have to be able to dismiss without a process.
Understood.
Who are at-will.
So here's my question. How does, I don't understand how requiring approval, which seems sort of slightly ministerial, but not really because it's still, it's not really that ministerial, but it's, it's a process. How does that convert an at-will employee to an employee that can only be fired for cause? I'm not seeing that link.
If, right, full-time employees.
Yes.
Salary employees.
Yes.
Are on probation when they're hired for six months.
Okay.
And they can be dismissed for any reason during that six months.
Right.
Right, thereafter, they become
For cause.
For causing, right, employees, and that's in their, their employee handbook.
Okay.
At-will employees are always subject to our dismissal at-will. And if you appoint someone and then reserve the right to dismiss them by the Selectmen, that's a process that we can't, we can't go through. We need to be able to dismiss part-time employees at-will.
But how does the?
And, and we do that with, you know, lifeguards and people that are not doing the job. We, we simply have to be able to do that.
I understand that, but where is the, where is the point in the process where the dismissal has to come from you? I thought only the approval had to come before the Board of Selectmen. Where's the dismissal?
Because that's what the, that's what the charter language says, appointment and dismissal.
Okay.
I, I tell you, the, the, the employment lawyer at Virtue Moses will come to you, to your ordinance committee and explain the difference.
Okay, but if that's what the charter says, then it needs to go.
Again, when it comes to the charter language.
Like we're kind of going like this.
Yeah, so that, so it's, we will get it into committee and then at that meeting, we definitely need our legal counsel to be at that meeting to give us, you know, this is the way it has to go. I mean, we can't.
And as a policy matter though, why wouldn't we want salaried and part-time employees to be approved by the board? Why wouldn't we want both to be approved by the Board of Selectmen?
Again, last year we had three hundred
Right.
Part-time employees. We used to give them ten ninety-nines until the IRS came and said, you can't give them ten ninety-nines. You have to give them W twos.
Okay.
But we, you know, literally, I don't know who the lifeguards are. I don't know who the yoga instructor is at the Lapham Center and I really don't care. I want the department, I want the, well, I want the department managers to be responsible for, for vetting them and hiring them and, but, but the Board of Selectmen can't, we, we approved, approved a list of fifty-two employees. They were just names. We, we know nothing about their backgrounds. That's not, that's not a conscious approval process and it can't represent an appointment under the, under the.
Are the names public otherwise?
Well, again, we all.
Is it a transparent process?
That's the other thing. Historically, we only did the Recreation Department. And my understanding is because Rob Malazny wanted to oversee what Steve Bankett was doing in terms of hires. It wasn't a process that had much sense to it.
So guys, I think we're, we're too deep in the week.
I'm trying to understand. I don't want, the Bylaws and Ordinance Committee has done an incredible amount of work. I don't want to do more unless it's going to actually do something. So if it's a charter issue and we need to work simultaneously, then we need to know that.
So I think, I think.
Spin our wheels.
Well, I think, I think one meeting will tell us that for sure.
Yes.
But I also just want to know from a policy standpoint, like what's, what's, where does the rubber meet the road here? Like why, why, why is there this push and pull where you don't want to do this? Other people do want to have this approval process. Isn't important in the town to have that transparency when you're hiring people? And so I just am trying to understand what the driver is here.
I'll be happy to talk about it in committee.
Awesome. Let's do it.
Thank you. Thank you, Kevin.
I got a question. Oh, Tom. Yeah, so Kevin, I watched the Board of Finance meeting and on the subject of the Internal Services Fund and the Weather Reserves, and there was a proposal to restructure all that and the net, net of that would be a reduction in the mill rate.
Oh, that's not the objective.
Okay.
And I'm not sure that's actually, I'm not sure that actually results. That's not the objective of that process.
Okay, doesn't matter.
Well, it does in terms of what.
Oh, no, 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 I'm sorry. It doesn't matter in terms of my question.
Yeah.
Todd Lavieri, Todd Lavieri did say that the, the funds that are released, they would strongly consider applying that as a reduction.
But that's not the objective.
Okay. He can say whatever he wants. You can call it whatever you want. It's not relevant.
I don't disagree. He said that, but that is not the goal of what he's doing.
Okay.
Yeah.
But the impact is what I want to talk about. Right now, take an example, if you estimate claims at ten million dollars and you're only insuring above twelve million, the two million spread currently is held in a, in a, in a reserve and up the amount in that reserve is appropriated. Now, the, what, the takeaway I came away from the meeting is that under this new arrangement, the funds would be drawn from the general fund, not necessarily requiring an appropriation. Did I read that right? Or would you agree that?
No, the whole issue is commerce is going to be appropriated to the Board of Education budget as opposed to it being available in the reserves. The reserves are in, are, are there in, in the ISF, the respective, right? So, you know, I don't, I don't want to get in the weeds on this, but there, there's a lot of logic behind.
Well, there's a.
Yeah.
There, there's a conceptual question, which is not in the weeds, which is every dollar that we spend, whether it be anticipated or not, should be subject to an appropriation. Would you agree with that?
Absolutely. It's required by the by laws. What I heard, we can't spend money. It's not appropriate.
Great. Then, then I'm happy because what I heard is that, that.
It's a question of the adequacy of the, of the reserve, which has been appropriated. It's there, it's already been appropriated to be there.
Which?
In the reserve.
Which reserve are you referring to?
Both. Town reserve.
Well, the, the ISF reserves are.
Town has an ISF because we're self-insured and the Board of Ed has.
Right.
What, what, what Todd is really suggesting is combine them into one, still calculate them separately, but combine it to one fund. So the, the funds are there appropriated to be used if they're needed. Right now, we have reserves upon reserves.
That's the current situation. The proposal was to significantly cut back on the amount that's reserved and appropriated and to just draw from the general fund in the, in case of an overage. Did, did you not hear it that way?
No.
Okay. We've been, well, good. I'm glad to hear that you're.
We've been appropriating too much for reserves.
That everything we spend should require an appropriation. I'm glad to hear that. Thank you.
Yep.
That's. Whether or not it's drawn from the general fund, it still requires an appropriation.
Absolutely, yeah.
And if that's the case, it may not, it may not draw, it may not be available to help reduce the mill rate because if it's in the budget.
It's in the reserves, which have already been appropriated. They, they can't get into the reserves without having been appropriated.
Yeah, I'm talking about.
To get into a fund, it has to be appropriate. That's different than the assigned balance in the general fund, which you, you may be talking about. That's not an appropriation.
Right. So we'll follow it. Thank you. Okay.
I have one more question.
I remember this is not like the Spanish Inquisition here.
This is that Prime Minister question.
Sometimes I feel like, sometimes I feel like Kevin's nice enough to come and give us his comments and we're like, fire. We, we treat him like a firing squad sometimes.
I appreciate that. I appreciate your.
I wish subject.
Update. This is cell towers and I understand that we've postponed the decision-making, but I also know that you mentioned you, you were working with VCOM to update the.
I haven't done anything further on that.
You haven't even done that, so that hasn't.
No, they can, they can come in on two weeks' notice and do that, and do that.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry. What's that?
They can come in on two weeks' notice and do that drive, drive test. And that, I, I assume that'll be one of the first things they.
That, that hasn't, that hasn't occurred yet. I was just.
I didn't want to.
It occurred yet.
No.
And I was just wondering if you had thought about, and I know that the Utilities Commission is going to be coming on board, but I don't know if there's anything going on between now and then. So I'm, that's why I'm curious to ask.
We could, we could authorize that, but it has to be done now by the to get the amount that was available. I think yes, it may have to be done by the Board of Selectmen, as opposed to me.
Yeah.
But I, I didn't want to be provocative in doing that since people.
No, totally, totally get that. And, and actually I think them doing the coverage map makes a lot of sense if that's, you know, what they're going to do. I was just wondering if you had taken any more thought about having a different company look at the RF study or if you, you're going to kick that.
Well, I think if you look at their resume, I mean, they, they do, they do business for all sorts of municipalities in states around the Northeast. So I don't.
Right, but they're, but, but they, they have skin in the game for, I mean, basically what they're, what they, what their goal is to optimize your, the equipment itself. They're, they're really not a disinterested third party. We can, we can take this offline, but I really would like to continue the conversation about a separate RF study from a, a disinterested third party that could really compare the radio frequency emissions.
Yeah, I, I would seriously doubt whether there's anybody that can be truly independent because they, they're all RF engineers.
Some are more independent than others, I would say, you know. And so it's just, it's something that I would, I would like to, you know, to continue to, to discuss. And I know that, and maybe this is something that we could, you know, make sure we, we talked to the new Utilities Commission and maybe it's something that they can weigh in. That'd be great. Right.
I look forward to working with the Utilities Commission, so.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Rita. That wasn't so hard. Thank you. All right. Item number five, land acquisition. Chris Shipper, and he's trying to get to dinner, so we're going to have to.
I can bring up the Executive Director of the Land Trust, John Winter.
Hi, John. How are you? Welcome.
John, I think you kicked that mic there. Hi, everyone.
How are you?
Hello, hello, I'm Chris Shipper. I am here as Chair of the Conservation Commission. As Chair of the Conservation Commission, I sit ex officio on the Land Trust Board, so I'm familiar with their activities and operations. We are, we are grateful to Michael Dynan. It's my wife saying, when are you going to be at dinner?
That'll be five minutes.
Right. Yeah, be ready. Thank you. I'm grateful to have the first selectman here who has been very helpful in helping the Land Trust pursue this opportunity. I'm also grateful to Michael Dynan for writing a long story this morning, which I, I'm hopeful that many of you have seen and read. And so I am prepared to show you a few slides about the acquisition and then follow that with a discussion about how you finance the land acquisition fund going forward. So if that's acceptable, I'll move through that quickly. John Winter is very familiar with the deals, with the deal structure and, and can answer any of your questions. So Tiger, Tucker, if I can share. Okay. This is what I want to share. And let me just put this up to play. And here we go. That's interesting. Your mouse disappears when you do this. Can't work it that way. Okay, let me hit share. I think I got it now. So, am I sharing?
Yeah.
There you go. Maximize it, you mean? In my, there you go.
You still let my sees guys.
Are they showing up on the screen? Well, I'm going to leave them there because if I hit another button, it'll all disappear. Some of you are familiar with this property at the top of Valley Road. If there are anybody who has questions about it, I'll, I'll tell you about it. It has a long history of discussion. It's been threatened to be demolished. It was offered to be moved. We were very fortunate to have the intervention of the First Selectmen, which is what you need when you deal with a water company. They kind of roll, steamroll a, a, a land trust and an all volunteer group. We were very grateful for tremendous support early on. I think that's T for Tom, E for Angle. There's a, a good collection of citizens who, who stepped up to try to save this property. And you should know it's at the top of Valley Road. There is a, it, it's next to a very large existing water company land, the group's reservoir. It also adjoins a land trust property, probably our most pristine preserve. And our first, and our first preserve in the property. And what it does is it takes this house and the land and subdivides the property so that the house and an acre, almost two acres is being sold to the land trust. And then the water company keeps the remaining two acres because it adjoins their pathways and what have you. So it's a, it's a way to separate the two. The big advantage is that, that two-acre property now joins the eleven acres of the land trust, so it extends the open space opportunity. In terms of the deal structure, I'm, I'm sure John can fill in any details, but it, it should be viewed basically as this. It's a land acquisition with the house thrown in as a bargain. Considering that they were going to demolish it, you know, the, the, the value they assigned to it is very low, so we are looking at a bargain purchase on this property. We're, we're waiting to sign the final details of the purchase and sale agreement. But we know that when you buy a house in a bargain, that there is work that has to be done to the house. So we're also calculating, putting funds into the immediate preservation of the property. Order of magnitude to, to give you a sense of market value, this is the Zillow estimate that the whole property is worth about one point nine. I can assure you, we're paying considerably less than that. It's a bargain purchase for the land trust. That, that bargain is such that we have requested from the, a dispersment from the land acquisition fund. This will come to you when it's officially comes through of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That will represent approximately one-fifth of the acquisition and repair costs of the property and it'll probably represent one-tenth of the total capital that we will be putting behind this project. So that's coming. It has to come from the concept. Once the PNS is sold, once the PNS is signed, it will then come to the Conservation Commission to recommend to the Board of Selectmen, Board of Selectmen, Board of Finance, Board of Finance to Town Council. So you are hereby informed to a certain degree and happy to answer any questions you.
So Chris, you're viewing this as an educational process to.
So Chris, you're viewing this as an educational process to keep us in the loop, basically.
Yeah, let me just mention, at the Board of Selectmen meeting yesterday, Board of Selectmen approved the sense that we will support this transaction so they can feel comfortable signing the purchase sale, purchase and sale agreement. Because. Otherwise, they're raising all private money, so.
Well, to be fair, no one goes to sign a deal without having some of the fine, without having the financing lined up, which is why we're doing this upfront.
And I think a lot of us watched the Board of Finance meeting uh, and the question came up about how much money we have in the acquisition fund now, maybe you can talk about that, you know?
Yeah, I I can say that right now, um, uh, which is a great segue into the next discussion we're we're going to have. Is right now the uh, land acquisition fund has a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So it's in place.
And we have, we've set aside fifty in the following budget, is that in there, is it? Or is it? So there's a hundred fifty in there now, or is it a hundred fifty after?
There's a hundred fifty after July first, but there's um.
So there's a hundred in there now.
There's a.
There's a hundred coming. In discussion.
Well, the Board of Finance has a bond resolution which they haven't moved forward yet for a hundred thousand dollars for the third year. Right, so.
So that that's where we, that's where we stand. Are there any, any questions or anything I can explain?
I just wondered, is the property in a two acre zone or four acres?
It's in a four acre zone, so we will have to get. P and Z approval for a subdivision under the flexibility for open space. Uh, um, I guess, under the.
Clause.
Clause in the uh, in the planning and zoning uh, code.
So you'll be allowed to preserve the property even if it's under.
Right, it it's, it's, yeah, it's to request that flexibility, but we know we have to go before. P and Z, and that's the critical element to close the transaction, so we're. Sign a purchase and sale dependent upon that approval. And then we close probably given the schedule of P and Z by September or October.
Was the original property four acres or?
Original property was four point four, they took off four tenths early on. And now they're subdividing the remaining four. But the advantage for us is that we were originally going to guess, just get the house footprint at a very narrow strip. And and they wanted more money, and we said only if you increase the land and improve our connectivity to the land trust back it, so now. The land we're getting includes an old farm trail that leads almost to the back of the property.
And it it goes to the edge of the pond of the reservoir?
Pardon?
And the property goes to the edge of the reservoir?
Uh, parts of our land trust property goes to the edge of the reservoir, this property does not, the the water company has kept that portion that abuts their reservoir property.
Okay, thank you.
Unless it's it's not there, the the property that we're talking about is behind the house.
That they're keeping.
No, we are getting.
We're gonna get.
We're acquiring.
We're acquiring the house and the land that goes due north. They're keeping the western portion, we're getting the eastern.
Yeah, hi, since the town is contributing money or proposed to contribute money, is there an MOU between the town and the land trust in terms of restrictions placed on the land?
It it's a great question. The, 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 the. The big picture here is that the land, land trust is in fact almost an adjunct of the town. In its open space preservation and and the the simple um. The 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 simple clause is that if the land trust were to ever demise, all the lands would end up back in the town's possession. So it comes back to the town. The, the. Question of 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 a precise MOU could be, could be looked at. And the truth is, when we did the Silver Mine Fowler deal early on. The uh, property was protected under the various land trust clauses as open space and it was created, it was rewilded in fact to be open space, so. It gets that permanent protection of being open space.
And in the land acquisition fund ordinance that was approved by the Town Council, the last sentence, I believe, says that grants can be made to the land trust to acquire open space. So this, this is the purpose of the ordinance.
I'm just wondering, could a cell tower be placed on that property? I'm serious.
The uh, Soundview Lane Tower, which went live with AT&amp;T last year, and Verizon is just going live now, serves that area. They don't need another cell tower there.
But but technically, it could be because there's no restrictions, there's no MOU between the town and the land.
There is no MOU between the town, other than than this.
It's just something that I suggest possibly looking into because I feel like we're contributing all that money and it's like if there's no restrictions on the land at all. It, anything could happen.
Well, the problem is the land trust is acquiring the property, not the town. We're making a grant to the land trust, we could look, we can investigate that, but um. The land trust has has uh, most of their deeds don't permit anything to be done by way of commercialization, so. In this case, I don't know, the deed hasn't been written yet, so we can look at that.
Right, well, uh, it's certainly certainly open to a a suggestion, I suspect. There might be redundancy in the tower, but in the future, it makes sense, and also there's still the two acres that the water company holds, that could also be a a a host for a tower. And they're going to ask for permission to have a small structure there or on their remaining portion as well. You know, maybe for water testing or what have you.
All right, thank you, Chris.
Okay.
Something about putting cell towers on land trust properties would not be good for the commercial. Or the marketing of the land trust.
I always get that say, the assets aren't particularly good for us.
No, 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 not good optics.
Uh, most of our properties are are deed protected, so we can't, we don't have, we'd have to go to the Attorney General to get any kind of dispensation for it. Which um, unless there are any other further questions on this topic, I'll quickly move to the next side.
You've got dinner to get to, Chris, let's go.
Okay. Uh, here's a discussion about um, financing the land acquisition fund. And and I'll start with, it was. Uh, it it's based on a statute that says any municipality by vote of the legislative body may establish a special fund, which will be known as the land acquisition fund. And money shall be deposited in the fund in an amount not to exceed an amount which would be generated by the imposition of a tax of two mills. Uh, against the property, subject to tax in such municipality, it may be appropriated by the municipality, and such funds shall be used by the municipality for the acquisition of land to be used for open space, recreation and such. Such funds shall not lapse at the close of the municipal year. This is the statute. That was uh, used to pass the resolution in twenty seventeen with the one exception or one adjustment, which was. Uh, if you think about two mil in New Canaan. You're talking about, I I'm I'm gonna say uh, thirty million dollars, something like that, I don't know, but well, we're at eighteen on a hundred and fifty, so no, I'm off by a factor. It was um, adjusted at the time to not exceed a half mil, which would be about five million dollars a year, well. Um, so you understand there's this upper limit. But we've seemed to have fallen to the other side of that, which is we've over five years only accumulated a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the land acquisition fund. I'm not sure if any of you have done a land deal in New Canaan or a property deal in New Canaan, but a hundred and fifty thousand dollars over five years isn't going to really put you in great shape. For purchasing uh, or supporting the purchase of property. I do like the idea of bargain purchases. Um, and and our experience is that open space purchases can be gotten for around a hundred and fifty thousand dollars an acre, but they're very hard to find, there's always. And if it is a hundred and fifty, it's the town contribution of a hundred and fifty, and then private money comes in and then bargain sale elements come in. So the, the, the challenge has been, how do you fund, how do you finance the land acquisition fund? And um, one area that has, that that could be possible is looking at the real estate sales conveyance fee. Has any, uh, have any of you sold a property here in New Canaan? In the last ten years?
I don't remember the specific numbers, I know you're gonna ask, but yes.
So what you probably, when you looked at your closing statement, didn't notice or did notice, or just were so happy or whatever the outcome was. That you paid one percent to the state of Connecticut. As a sales conveyance fee. But you also paid twenty five basis point, one quarter of one percent to the town in New Canaan on the sale of your property. Which is sort of surprising, right, so um. That makes sense, I I recently did a property transit, I sold and I bought a downside, bought another property. And it occurs that uh, when I went back to understand, how does it, how does a sales conveyance fee pay twenty, a half, quarter basis point for the town in New Canaan? I went back and looked at the legislative record and the operative line at the time, it was Senator Representative Lowell Wyker. Who um, helped push this through. The conveyance fee occurred because the, there used to be a federal stamp tax on every real estate transaction, the government said, okay, we're gonna get out of this. And the state said, okay, the towns can now step in on that twenty five basis points. But the legislative record said, you know, it seems to me it offers a golden opportunity uh, to communities themselves to plow this back into land for future generations. The intention was you would use some, you could use it however you feel. But the idea was why not plow some of it back into preserving open space for future generations? Uh, this is just a little cut out of part of my recent uh, transaction, so I wrote a check to the town of New Canaan for three thousand sixty two dollars and fifty cents. And I'm thinking, well, good, okay. Uh, why? But then I thought, well, I wouldn't mind if a thousand dollars of that went to the open space fund. So what if we were to suggest to the Board of Finance to to allocate a portion of this. To the open space fund, because it goes up and down, it fluctuates with the economy. And the idea is you want to accumulate in the up cycle so that you're ready in the down cycle to. To, to pick up properties that might not be otherwise gotten. And um, I I obviously was a little brazen and I approached the Board of Finance, said, why not ten basis points of the twenty five, I mean. I play bridge, you want to sometimes bid one more than you think you can make, but start there. And so they said, okay, well, let's think about it because it is a mechanism to go forward. And they said, are there any other examples? I said, well, I'm also building right now in the town of New Canaan. And when I went to get my permit, I paid one percent for my building permit. But I paid an additional one percent, one hundred basis points to the Planning and Zoning Affordable Housing Fund. So here's an example of permitting fees being directed. So it's an opportunity for the town to consider directing a portion of this money, which fluctuates when the markets are good, there's more money and they're down. And it's generally not one of these highly budgeted numbers, it's sort of like. If the conveyance fee is a little higher or lower in the in the revenues, it shows up as an excess or an underage kind of thing. It's um. It's a little bit protected by just the way our revenues are protected because we always project ninety eight point five percent collection, but we achieve ninety nine point nine. Percent, so these are these cushionings that are there. So the the simple thought was, why not consider allocating or using this mechanism to allocate funds because. In five years' time, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars isn't going to get you very far in preserving open space. And we know there's only four percent open space left in New Canaan. Everything else is developed. So. If you're gonna play, you have to be prepared. And um. The Board of Finance will say, well, if you need the money, come to us and we'll talk to you, but you're not going to get many people to start negotiations and then tell the 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 seller. Or the bargain seller, hold on, I just have to go through about thirteen months of discussions. To close the deal. So you need to have some funds ready regularly to make transactions happen. And. If you look down just below, Darian is about to look at an eighty five million dollar open space acquisition. We're nowhere near looking at something like that. But if we do end up doing acquisitions, it will be most likely related to these three big water company lands. As they start to merge or spin off property, there will be an opportunity for a New Canaan lake or. Or a property or another big wetlands area that could be preserved. And unless the town has money there to to start the discussion. It it won't be easy to do, and more importantly, if the town has money, the state comes in at a much higher level, they basically score. Anybody who applies for state funds and says, okay, oh, you have a land acquisition fund, it's funded, got it, you get the forty points on this one. And forty points could be the difference between getting state funding and not getting state funding, and it's generally twice to three times what the town would put in. So I bring this uh, discussion up, Christina.
Um, I just have a question, you said it was four percent uh, remaining open space, that doesn't count the open space that you have under your.
Oh, well, yeah, that's what we've, that's, that's already protected.
Okay, so unprotected open space is four percent.
True unprotected open space, yeah, we're talking about excess acreages on properties, uh, some water company land. Um, some large estates, it excludes something like Grace Farms now, but it would include the old Clark property, for instance.
Okay, thank you.
So and and um, the new plan of conservation and development will again identify in higher, you know, in a hierarchy of all the opportunities out there. And that's the, that's the message, which is somehow to get consistent funding into the land acquisition fund makes sense because it's um. It's an afterthought right now, and uh, if you're gonna play in this field, you need to have some funding going forward.
Any question for Chris?
Dinner. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't know, thank you so much for giving us a moment to to bring this up, I think it'll be debated uh, going forward.
Thank you. Thank you both. Enjoy your dinner. All right. Item number six, independent accounting firm, in accordance with the Audit Committee Ordinance sixty two dash five B. Members of the Audit Committee acting as an ad hoc committee, along with the First Selectman and the Chairman of the Town Council, recommended the council. The approval of the engagement of. PKF O'Connor Davies as the Town of New Canaan's independent accounting firm for fiscal year twenty twenty four. To include the annual audit for the year ended June thirtieth, twenty twenty three. Base fee of the audit services is a hundred and three thousand dollars. Additional fees for services beyond the annual audit scope will be negotiated separately. And you wanna, oh, Anne's on Zoom, hey, Anne, how are you?
How you doing?
Are you driving somewhere to escape? Where are you?
Well, one, I'm not driving, I'll I'll point that out first. I have the one, um, so um. In front of you, we, the Audit Committee voted to keep PKF this year. Um, and I'm very appreciative of that for many reasons, for history and the knowledge on that. But what I'd also like to point out is that the area um. Audit firms are having a difficulty right now with staffing. Um, and the staffing levels, so the area towns um, that have gone out for RFP. They're only getting one response, they're current auditors, so it's telling us that audit firms can't take on other clients right now because they're struggling with keeping staff. And um, in addition, our our area has seen a significant increase in the fees. Um, we're actually one of the lowest ones of an increase, some of them went up as far as eighteen percent. Um, for the area towns, so. Um, I look forward to working with them and hopefully, you know, the Town Council will approve moving forward PKF.
Thank you, Anne. And just to give you some guys some background, uh, obviously. This meeting, we had a meeting that took place uh, and the Audit Committee, you know, put this together with Kevin and and Anne was there and they invited me to sit in. On the discussion about renewing the contract and the feedback on uh, O'Connor Davies was very, very positive and obviously we've seen. We've worked with them for quite a while now and and the results have been excellent as far as their service goes, so you know, and I know we have, we have both. Bill Perret here, we have Chuck Jacobson here from the Audit Committee, guys, you want to come up just for a second, just uh. You want to speak about your uh, experience with the. The firm and just uh, make us feel good about approving them.
Well, I.
Oh, we can hear you, Bill, that's fine, I think, yeah, that might, yeah, that's, that's a hot right there.
Uh, no, we uh, we agree, see that um. Uh, it's an excellent firm, they do excellent work for us. The young lady who was the manager on the engagement has gotten promoted to partner, so she will in fact. Be carrying a larger burden of the audit and provide some independent oversight, which, you know, you don't get. Having the old partner be around for a long period of time. We've also felt that this was, I agree with everything that has been said about the difficulty of. Changing firms and also the difficulty of the firms getting staffing and then the negative implications that has on us. Uh, I don't want anybody to take this the wrong way, but um, you remember we, our report was two months delayed this year, a lot of changes, we didn't feel that this was an optimum time. To change auditors, we'd like to get back to the normal of having the report ready, ready, say, me, October, November, December timeframe. And then my full expectation would be, we would go out next year. To um, to bid the job, to see how we're, to see if we're. We believe we're competitive, but just to ensure we're competitive, we would have done this year had that not been for the delay, now the delay was a part of us. Because we had changed CFOs here, not Anne's fault. But we just, we all collectively think this is the right answer.
Great.
And from a fee standpoint, um, actually, we spent a lot of time on fees each year, we think, um, you know, we have probably same information some of you have in terms of how this compares to other towns. We've taken all that into consideration, and we think this is the appropriate fee for the town of New Canaan.
And one of the things that it mentions here is that the audit scope negotiated separately. In the past, we've had a couple of times where we've exceeded the amount that we've approved, is there? Do, we won't know that until we get there, is that. do, we won't know that until we get there. Is that correct? I mean, is that?
You don't know that until you get there, but um, typically the exceeding that, you know, if we exceed a budgeted amount, we we know that there, we're sort of headed in that direction beforehand. And that's because um, finance department has some type of a problem. We don't expect that. Um, and we don't expect to exceed the budget, um, unless there was either some new standard that came out or you know, some unanticipated problem at the Board of Education or in the town. We don't expect even those. You know, we also do not have an internal audit process in place, although it's been budgeted. And we've been a little bit slow putting that back post COVID. But the reason for that is because um, all firms having a lot of difficulty getting qualified staff. Although working with Ann and working with Kevin, we are um, looking to uh, start that up again here in the very near future. All of which is budget, budget is already.
All right. Questions? And uh, Robin, your hand's not up, right? No, okay. Ann, are you uh, you you're you're good enough to be in the car there driving? And one of the things you talked about was just working with O'Connor Davies. Have you worked with O'Connor Davies in your past? Or was this the first time that you've worked with them?
This was my first time.
Yeah. How do they compare with other other firms you've worked with?
Um, very similar, you know, they just have their different ways of doing things, but very similar, very professional. Um, it, I I had a good experience working with them, very good experience.
Okay, great. That's good to hear. All right. Uh, any other, is that it? That's almost too easy, guys. Thank you for, uh, we should have done this early, so you guys could have gone home. Chuck, do you want to say anything? You're good. You're good? You're good? All right. All right. All right, so uh, let's see. We need to vote on this. So I read it into the minutes, but we do need a motion. So Tom, you want to make a motion? And we need a second. Uh, Rita, I saw your hand up first. All right, all in favor? And that's unanimous. I think I can see Robin's, oh, there you are. Is Luke out there still? Luke, how you say? Are you up or down? See there?
I'm sorry, I just unmute, I just unmuted. I'm very familiar with the firm. They do excellent work. Um, I'm not a hundred percent. I know that staffing's been an issue. I think accounting firms have actually benefited from the work from home and been able to attract because they're not as much needed uh, in person. But uh, uh, my history with the firm and my experience has been very bunged up, very polished and professional.
Thank you. So that, so that's unanimous. All right. Moving on, financial update, update on our recent financial results. Uh, is Josh out there?
I am. Thanks for having me.
Josh, are you driving too? Or are you, are you stationary?
No, I'm uh, I'm not driving. Um, so I will share my screen, one second. But you should have this on your tablets where it will be much easier to read. All right. Okay, hopefully you can see that all right. So in front of you, you have the year-to-date financials ending on April thirtieth, twenty twenty three. Um, just as a note, we're eighty three percent way through the year, at least up to that point, which is now a a couple of weeks past. Uh, starting on the revenue side, the overall revenue is at a hundred point three six percent or uh, five hundred fifty five thousand over what we had originally budgeted. Uh, tax collections are the largest, of course, at a hundred and one point two percent or one point seven five million over what was budgeted. Um, to kind of keep in the back of your head, the maximum over what was budgeted, we could possibly hit if we had a hundred percent collection rate is about uh, two point one million. And I believe the number that we're really at right now is about one point nine over what was budgeted. So we're getting pretty close to the theoretical limit that we could even collect. Um, which is, you know, props, of course, to the tax collecting team. Um, down to building permits, they are at eighty two and a half percent, which is a six percent rise over last month. But it's, it's uh, hopefully gonna hit that hundred percent mark or or mid-high nineties by the time we get to uh, the end of the fiscal year. Uh, conveyance fees, they are at sixty five percent of what was budgeted, which is seven hundred thousand shorts. Um, but keeping in mind that conveyance fees really start to boom around uh, May and June. So we see those heavy hitting months. This past month was at um, uh, two hundred fifty thousand that we got. So it's, it's expected to to kind of come back and and fill out and hopefully reach that budgeted number. But well, time will tell, I think. Um, down is the Board of Ed excess cost grant. That is um, just, you know, to to mention it, the second half of that comes in uh, towards the end of the fiscal year. So that's why it's at fifty percent. Um, other revenues is a million plus higher or a million more, a million and change higher than it was last month. Um, we're now hitting a hundred and six percent of what was budgeted. The BOE ECS came in at a hundred thousand higher than what we had expected. Um, of course, interest on investments are uh, four hundred or so thousand higher at this point of the year than what was budgeted. Uh, liens, fees and investments on taxes are about a hundred and fifty thousand higher than what was budgeted. Uh, so that kind of makes up a lot of those within the other uh, revenue categories. Any questions on revenues?
Uh, it doesn't look like it, Josh. Keep going.
Um, down to the expense side, there's not really much to say. Uh, we're at seventy eight point seven two percent of of expenses budgeted. Oddly enough, in April, at this time last year, we were at exactly seventy eight point seven two percent of what was budgeted last year. So uh, we're trending towards what we expect to hit a hundred percent or hopefully slightly under that number uh, by the time year end comes. But we obviously, of course, plan that we uh, fill that out and and reach what was budgeted a hundred percent mark. Um, in terms of the mill rates, that's gonna be uh, decided on next June, well, this coming June by the Board of Finance. Uh, they pushed that out from the traditional May so that we could kind of get a better sense of of where we think we will end up in terms of fund balance and and on the P and L side. Right, right as of now, we think we'll probably end up around one point five to two million, probably one point seven five or six five um, to the good in terms of revenues that we had budgeted. Um, so yeah, hopefully um, we'll kind of get a better picture as time goes on and we get all those numbers in. We get those expenses, the POs in from departments and we really get a better picture of where we're at um, for the June meeting. So we can get the mill rates set. And that's pretty much it. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Thank you, Josh. Questions? One, one question that came up was the timing, you know, traditionally, we've, we've set that middle rate now and pushing it off to the next meeting. Is there any, is there any, and Josh, this may not be a question for you, but is there any, what's the drop dead date for our our departments to get everything printed and out in time?
I know Ann had spoken with the tax collector, um, working with, I believe, QDS, um, who sends out these bills. And I don't think there's any issue. Well, I should say, there is definitely no issue with pushing it off.
There's, yeah, there is no issue.
There's definitely no issue. So um,
So the, so the cadence is once that Miller gets set at their June meeting, then they go to work and get all the bills out. They'll, they'll easily hit that July.
Yeah, she's getting the bills out. I'm putting the budget for twenty four in now that it's had the revenue side revised. And by, you know, got only a couple of weeks to get up to kind of crunch it all in, but it shouldn't be a problem.
Okay. Counting on you guys.
Of course.
All right. No other questions? Thank you. Get back to what you were doing. We appreciate it, Josh.
Yeah, thank you so much.
And Ann, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Number eight, Playhouse update. Review and update on Playhouse Theater. Tiger is out there. Just, we saw him before. We need to get him back up here.
I'm here.
I'm gonna recuse myself.
Okay. Thank you, Hillary. Hillary's recusing herself. Tiger is kind enough to join us uh, remotely. He said, it's a busy baseball season for his uh, for his kids. So thank you, Tiger, for.
No problem, Steve. Thanks. They lost tonight. It was kind of bad. Lost the hand in Madison. But, you know, eight, six, still a good game. The uh, uh, so I'll give you a, a brief update about where we are um, on the Playhouse itself. Um, per your request, we went and um, solicited proposals from four separate project managers. Um, Slam Collective, which is working on us, uh, working with us on the Police Department. Uh, Lidl and Torrance, which is a, a firm that uh, specializes in older buildings. Um, Hobbs Incorporated, as as you know, and VVA, project and cost managers. They were um, when we did the Police Department um, interviews, they, they stood out highly. We chose Slam uh, because of our history with uh, Slam, working on various BOE projects. But the VVA had a, had um, had a strong showing at that time. So we asked for uh, proposals. We received three proposals back, uh, Slam, Hobbs and VVA. Um, and they were all not, essentially in the, in the same ballpark. Slam was slightly lower, but they were estimating their, their work on an hourly basis at a blended rate. Um, and if you kind of tried to equalize that number, it would have been equal to or higher than Hobbs. Um, and the uh, the issue with uh, Slam was that uh, they couldn't have started until the beginning of June. And we wanted to hit the ground running um, right after um, the award from the Selectmen. So we brought the three to the, the, to the Selectmen. We discussed it during the Selectmen meeting and Hobbs was uh, was chosen as the uh, project manager. That was on May second. On May ninth, we had a collective meeting with all parties um, except for Cinema Lab. So all the contractors, the engineer, um, the architects, um, for the various trades, um, we met uh, with Hobbs and and uh, three members from Hobbs Incorporated. Ian and two of his uh, two of his fellow um, workers, his coworkers. Um, so we had about fourteen, fifteen people in the room, spent a couple of hours going through uh, certain things. And then Hobbs met individually with our HVAC, our um, our, our architects, the, the general contractor. He has all the, all the um, documents in front of him. Um, he'll be meeting tomorrow with uh, the soundproofing consultants and then we'll be meeting with uh, Cinema Lab separately as well. So he's got a couple of meetings left, but he's got pretty much all the information that that he needs in front of him. They've hired a, a firm called NCON, very well-known firm that will come in and take a look. Third-party review of the HVAC, not only the design, but the uh, the estimate of construction for it. Uh, I spoke to Ian today about what he, you know, his comfort, where he, where he is right now. He's, he's comfortable with all the information he's, he's gathered. Anything else he needs, he'll ask for. Um, and then I asked him for a timeframe. He told me four weeks. I always do the under promise and over deliver. That was Rudy Giuliani and his book of leadership. So I say four to six weeks. So uh, four to six weeks, he should have something back to us as to um, uh, ideas where we might be able to save money, where we're, where we're headed in the right direction, things of that nature. And then at that point in time, um, we can, we can go to the Board of Selectmen, um, give them that update, give you that update. I told Ian uh, that it might be a good thing for him to consider it to be ready to talk to the council um, next month at this time. Um, so he'd be prepared to do that. So that's in essence where we stand. So he's working through that process. Um, as far as the Playhouse itself, uh, we had the contractor working, but only on items that we knew were necessary and already had been approved and already had been funded. So he, we had to remove a chimney on the inside of the building. We talked to Hobbs Incorporated about that. They were comfortable with that work going forward. And then we brought to the Board of Selectmen uh, uh, contract for the purchase and installation of the elevator. Again, spoke to Hobbs about that. That's a long lead time item. If we hadn't necessarily ordered it now and we wait another month or four to six weeks, we would definitely be past the timeframe. It's the elevator that we want, it's the elevator that will fit. It was an excellent price. Um, so we, we uh, went to the Selectmen and they ordered that, um, or they approved that, that um, that purchase and installation with uh, with Otis Elevator. So I don't know if you have any questions um, at this time, but that's uh, in essence where we uh, where we stand at present.
Thanks, Tiger.
You're welcome.
Uh, questions? Christina.
Where is the estimated completion time from Ian's perspective at this point?
Estimated completion time of construction?
Yeah.
His work.
No, of construction.
We haven't gotten that far yet.
Okay. And how long is he expected to remain as a consultant?
At present, we have him through um, through this process. We are considering having him stay. But that's the decision for uh, for the board, for us and the Board of Selectmen, mostly the Board of Selectmen at that time.
Yeah, they'll prove it.
Right. Consideration was given to that. So at present, we're just working towards this phase. And if we feel it's beneficial to have him continue, then we will have him continue. And we'll bring that, we'll bring an amendment to the, to his uh, to his contract, his current contract to uh, to the board for approval at that time. I'd like, I'd like him to finish where he's at now and let him say, you know, whether or not he feels comfortable releasing the reins or if he wants to stay on it, I'd like him to finish where he's at now before we start to consider where we're going forward. You know, I, I, I don't have a go yet, so I, I, I'm not gonna be at that point to uh.
Tiger, just for clarity though, can you remind everybody what, what we, what we signed Ian up for? How many, how many weeks or months or what, what's the uh?
Yeah, well, what we had asked for was to start um, immediately and then finish by June thirty. That was the uh, that was the RFQ, you know, that was the, you know, the RFP that we asked for at that time in the scope of services was the, the review of the current design drawings of the, and the proposal from the general contractor, as well as the HVAC design and proposal for HVAC installation. Essentially a peer review and value engineering process for the project. Uh, given the tight timeframe involved in order to open the theater for the holiday season, the review is slated to begin later than the May first and end by June thirtieth. That was the solicitation that we had given to the various parties. So he's, we uh, we awarded the contract on the second. He started on the ninth. So I can't, or he started before then, but we had our kickoff meeting on the ninth. Couldn't have been happier about how fast he was able to do it. He's, he feels that he'll be done. And like I said, four weeks, I'm saying four to six, and four to six puts us exactly on the timeframe that we wanted to be on on June thirtieth. Um, with a uh, with a decision as to how we proceed.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? All right. I think you're off the hook, Tiger.
Thank you very much.
Shortest meeting ever. Thank you. Thank you very much. And we'll get Ian back. Um, Ian will be back in June. We'll get him on the agenda and get a report from him.
Yes.
Thank you. All right. Number nine, proposed new ordinance. Final review and vote of the adopted proposed ordinance as follows. All right, finally. Here we are. You wanna, Hillary, I'll let you, I'll let you take it over there.
Um, so I read the amendments to, first we'll do the uh, Utilities Commission Ordinance. I read the amendments that we recently adopted. And if no one has any further amendments, and I, I hope you do not.
Yes, exactly.
Um,
Not at that cost.
I am going to, I will make a motion that uh, we adopt uh, the Utilities Commission Ordinance as set forth in Exhibit A to our agenda. So I'm making that motion. Who would like?
Second. Okay. All in favor? And that's unanimous. Luke, are you out there? That was the language of utilities, if you're there.
Yeah, yes, I am. Yes, I am. I'm, I'm, I'm in support.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
All right, that was unanimous. Item number ten, affordable housing.
Um, so we have the Affordable Housing Committee Ordinance as set forth in Exhibit B, the amendments to which I read into the record earlier. Uh, so I move that the Town Council uh, pass the Affordable Housing Committee Ordinance as set forth in Exhibit B.
Second. All in favor? Uh, Kim, again. And that Luke, are you out there?
Yep, still here and support.
Okay, thank you. All right, that's unanimous.
Congratulations, everyone.
Well, yeah, and you know, we have to take a minute and just thank both Tom and Hillary for leading us through this. I mean, these are two heavy duty jobs, getting both of these done. And it was a lot of work. And you guys did an amazing job shepherding this all the way through. And thank the committee who was under you, as well as Board of Selectmen. And you know, this is a big step for New Canaan. So hopefully, we've got a lot of good things that are coming in both of these areas. It's really, really exciting. As a town, you know, as far as the Utilities Commission goes, I think that's gonna be a great addition. But also affordable housing and the way that's set up with. And the way that's set up with basically taking the best of the best of all of our committees and putting them in one room together to solve. One of the biggest problems we have in town. I think this is going to be huge. So, uh, thank you again for getting this done. So hats off. Well done.
Pooch, privilege.
All right. Item number eleven, charter revision. A general discussion regarding the possible upcoming charter revision process. Penny.
Okey dokey, um, I sent a, um.
Document.
Capsulated letter in, uh, our, um, board packet. Uh, as a follow-up to my January, uh, letter to you outlining the charter proposal. Um, we've got to, if we're going to be doing this, we've kind of got to get on with it. Uh, because once the process starts, there is a sixteen-month not to exceed. Um, timeline in order to meet the deadlines for, uh, getting any proposals. Um, uh, for vote, uh, on the, you know, uh, fall. Two thousand twenty-four election. Um, as I stated in my, uh, note to you. This is, um, not ten years from the last, um, effort. But what happened in the two thousand fifteen, sixteen study is that there were. There was a long list of issues, uh, proposed to be discussed. And that list was developed by going out to the heads of all of the departments in Town Hall. As well as all of the elected and appointed members of boards, commissions, commissions. Yeah, committees, those kinds of things. And so that list was developed. Given to the, uh, Revision Commission and. Uh, a number highlighted as important topics to do really, really in-depth. Research on. And out of that research, uh, came a feeling that you don't want to. Put before the electric, uh, electorate, too many, uh, issues to vote on. Uh, because one or another of them could become a really hot button issue and kill all the others. Um, you know, just swept in with it. So you really, really do want to focus on the things that are most important. Um, to have the for, uh, the voters. You want to do it in a presidential year so that the most people, um, can, um, be aware of. What is being proposed for the governance of our, uh, town? And, uh, have, you know, have a vote in what that, um, uh, result is. Uh, so, um, I, I gave you just a couple, uh, topics as to. The kinds of things that were, uh, proposed, uh, and didn't go, um. Any further in research, uh, some of them were, uh, because they were really required a whole lot more. Uh, research than was allotted. Uh, others felt that they, um. Some of them could be handled by an ordinance and not, you know, getting into the charter. Um, and, um, but the overall arching, uh, effort is to. Make sure that our governance is the most efficiently run, um, uh, possible. Uh, we have a reputation of having a really good, strong charter. Um, and is highly regarded by other towns. But that doesn't mean that we can't be even better. And there are a couple of issues that have surfaced over the years that. Uh, if we really get into them, um, and I'll just give you an example. Should planning and zoning be the same commission? Uh, or should it be two separate commissions? Or if we can't get done, if there's some hurdle hurdles within the Planning and Zoning Commission as it exists. Is that solved by expanding the number of people on planning and zoning? So that you could have a subcommittee within the commission. So those are the kinds of things that come up repeatedly in discussion. Um, that, uh, I think warrant, uh, us stepping back. Looking at those issues again and saying, you know, are we doing things as well as we can, as efficiently as we can? Um, so, uh, that has been, you know, my feeling. So the, the next step would be to have the General Government Committee. Take this list that existed from the last commission. Take a quick look at it and see just what are the things that are really the most important issues to be looking at. And then come back to us in June and say, we think there are enough issues that would really warrant, um. A year's study, uh, to make our operations that much more efficient. And actually form the committee starting at our June meeting. We're not doing the, the work. The commission is doing the work, but we're setting the commission forward.
Could you say more about how you populate the commission? Where do the members come from?
Uh, we had nine members last time. Um. And I'll tell you who was on it. Dave Hunt, Catherine Corbett, Kit Deveraux, Mike Franco. Sally Hines, Kate Herlock, Russ Himes, Himes, um, Rich Townsend and myself. Uh, so there was representation from Board of Finance, from the Town Council, um, legal representation. Um, and, uh, you know, uh, Dave Hunt was, uh, um, not engaged in. Operations, uh, of the government directly.
But you'll have that list. You, you talk about maybe launching this in, after our June meeting, that list will be in front of us.
This needs to be developed, uh, by us.
So, so just to be clear, so the way it worked the last time we did this, we, we. Agreed to do the revision and then it moved to, I, I believe it was such a violation of ordinances. Cause I may remember making some calls on all these, these folks to get them together. But once you say, okay, we're gonna do this, we're gonna do a charter revision. You then activate the Charter Revision Commission and get it going. And then it's the job of.
They have thirty days.
Right, right. So, but with any, so this is what I'm not clear about again. So looking back at this again. Uh, we ran into this before, I, you know, you'd want the board of selectmen, obviously. I think you want them to, and have to have all these people approve. So it has to go through that way as well. So.
True. It's, it's actually formed by the Dan Gansel.
So we, we form it and they don't even have to approve who's on there? Wow.
So, so the General Government Committee meets before June fourteenth and.
Goes through last, the, the last, you know, list of issues. Um, and between them, you know, um. Two thousand sixteen, and now there can be other issues that have surfaced that were not identified last time.
I'm still not clear on how, how are we picking the people? Like, I understand we approve it, but who decides? Like, invited, how is that?
So there was a list put together of, you know, say twenty-five people that, you know, were identified as. Uh, able to serve on this, this is.
Qualified, that would be.
Yeah, this is, well, to me, this is one of the, this is obviously one of the big ones. I mean, this is, this is a pretty big deal. So you want to make sure that they have. Knowledge of the way everything sort of comes together in government. And, you know, you want to have people that have some sort of. They've been in touch with, and that's why I think we, we picked somebody from the council. We actually had a Democrat and Republican from the council to start with on the, on the, uh. And they, we agree going in that there weren't going to be the chairs of it, but they, you know.
So the government, would they be the people, like, kind of inviting folks? Or would everybody have like, oh, why not this? I'm just really trying to understand the process.
It's just going to come from all of us.
All of us, okay.
Right, starting right now, you can be thinking of people who would, would, um. Really be beneficial in looking at, at how we, you know, govern ourselves, um.
And it's a, it's a, like, we just pointed out, it doesn't end until. The, the election basically of twenty twenty-four. So it's a, you know, it's a pretty decent amount of. Time that goes in, in terms of getting there. I mean, it's, there's some, the meetings were intense for. You know, a few months, but then, you know, it's got to go through a, a process where you come out with all of the proposed changes and they're. You know, you don't want to have more than four or five because they have to be on a ballot. And it's a, uh. It does take a while to, to go through, identify everything and then go through the list and identify the four or five. Most important changes, because, you know, when they did this the last time, there were probably twenty different things on the list. And, you know, Kathleen and Penny would speak to this better than I, I would, but.
Does the commission, is there, are there? Is there a requirement to have people from the Board of Finance and Town Council? I mean, what did the?
Well, it was just, we did, because so there aren't any specific.
Familiar with. And it's difficult for someone who's not been engaged, you know, in governance.
So, well, for one, one of the things that was a hot button in the last, uh, revision was actually had to do directly with the Board of Finance. And that was, you know, whether or not the, the first selectman would be the chair of the Board of Finance. And historically, that was always the case. And we, when we approved the change, the chairman of the town, the chairman of the Board of Finance was then elected by the Board of Finance. And the first selectman became.
Yeah, yeah, I remember.
So, you know, that, that's just one of the major changes that took place. But there was a lot of discussion, town-wide discussion, town-wide input in terms of the pros and cons of each and every one of those. Um, items, because, you know, just in this little document that Penny put together, I mean, there, there's some. Those are huge changes in terms of what we do locally. So there's a lot of thought that would have to go into. I mean, we, we talked about. You know, there's a, there's a little memo here that says Board of Selectmen, should it be three or five? I mean, that's a, that's a, that's a huge change. Um, should the Board of Finance be elected or appointed? That's another massive change. Should PNC be divided? That, we talked about that a little bit. Um, but, and there's also, should the budget be subject to mandatory referendum? Some towns in Connecticut do that and, and others don't. So, I mean, there is some really, really big items here and there's always going to be. The pluses and minuses of, of why we do things the way we've done it, why we, why we're successful, why we're one of the most. Admired charters in, in, in the state. There's a hundred and sixty-nine towns and we're probably top three or four charters in the state. So, I mean, it's not, we don't want to mess around with it too much, Hillary.
Is there somewhere where the, the, um, the makeup and process of this is set forth, like? Okay, so what is it? Is it like nine members, minority representation?
Membership can be five to fifteen members.
Okay.
You're on the mic there Tiger?
I am. Um, as far as public office, not more than one-third of the commission may hold any other public office in New Canaan. The political party requirements are no more than bare majority of one party. The recommendations, the Town Council shall direct the commission to consider those recommendations included in the petition and may make other recommendations to the commission. And I should preface this by saying that implementing the process. Um, says the charter revision process shall be initiated by a resolution adopted by two-thirds vote of the entire membership of the appointing authority.
Is this statute? Is this statutory? Where can we get this?
Yeah, I would love to see that. municipal charters and special acts and section seven dash one eight seven to one ninety-one.
Could you share that with? That's from the state statutes?
Oh, yeah, Connecticut general statute.
Can you post it on the tablet, please?
I can't. Thank you so much.
Yeah, beside, besides that, the report of the last charter revision commission, which is a document that was sent. Everyone, you know, goes through the whole process of what was done.
Okay.
Yeah, uh, who made it up, who commented on the whole, so that was quite a thorough report.
Right.
You can read this and kind of get the whole sense.
That I'm just not familiar with all the names or party affiliations or why nine was chosen over, you know, I just, I'm a big. Process, like, where is it set for? And it's different, majority. A bare majority is different than what the normal minority, majority representation rules are under the statute. So that's important, yeah.
Yeah. And what's the timeline? When? It's a ten-year period, but when did the clock start ticking?
So, so, well, I answer the question. So I asked this, and it's a great question, Kim. So it, it actually, it actually advises that, that it's done. To every ten years. But in this case, because we're at the seven-year mark now. And some folks will ask, well, why are you doing it early? And, you know, Penny has identified the fact that there were quite a few issues that were discussed in the last. Change that weren't acted on. And, you know, part of me says, well, you know, we should just wait ten years. And then there's the, the argument and a good argument that, you know, everybody. In, in any corporation, every time you look at yourself, you want to make sure that you're improving yourself. And if there is room for improvement, why wouldn't you improve yourself? So, um, that's why looking in the mirror. You know, in seven years rather than ten years, I mean, that's, it's, it's logical to me. But I'm also one of these guys that doesn't like a lot of change, so.
Well, not to mention that in seven years, we have a presidential election or we wait eleven years before we have another presidential election. And you have the best voter turnout.
Yeah.
At a presidential election. So we either do it in seven. Or we wait.
It's only eight because we're starting in seven, so it's.
Right, so it'll be eight years.
Eight or twelve.
When it gets on the.
Eight or twelve, right.
Right, eight or twelve years. So if we want to have the most input from our electorate. We, it's probably best to have it on a presidential ballot because that's when you have the most voter turnout.
Right.
So I think it's wise to do it a couple of years early rather than wait longer.
Yeah.
To implement any changes.
Yeah, I kind of, I want to thank you for your work, Penny, on this. I kind of air, uh, side with Steve in terms of. You know, it is a big, big issue to open it. And if, if it, it, we're not getting complaints and there's nothing wrong. Why, why open it at this time? And, you know, I don't know how much bigger the turnout is. I, I don't, I haven't looked at the numbers to see.
Quite.
It's a lot.
It's a lot.
Turnout is, but, but I feel like, is there a process? I have to read what Tucker was talking about, but is the public asked at all? Like, do they want this? Do they want the charter revised? And, and, and instead of just having the finance in the government committee look at it, is the public asked what, how, what they're, you know, what they want?
The public will be asked because there'll be, there'll be a public hearing.
Are you asking, are you asking Kim if, no, are you asking whether they want to open it or not open it or?
Like, is anyone being asked, like, are we getting like an outcry? Like, let's open up the charter. We're really unhappy with our town government. You know, why, why are we doing it? It's, it's more work and we have a lot of other issues happening with the cell tower issue, with the affordable housing issue. There's an election coming up and, you know, town government. I, I, I just, I think it's, it's definitely worth talking about. But I, I just err on the side of, you know, delaying it.
That's fair. Good, Tom. Tucker, can we get copies of last year's report? Great. So, and also, oh, go ahead, Tom. Yes, yeah.
Yeah.
And can we, could we hear from Kathleen? Maybe she has some pointers, having been through this process of things we should keep in mind?
And while Kathleen's coming up, I'll just mention that several times in the process of writing the Affordable Housing Ordinance and writing the Utilities Commission Ordinance. Issues have come up where we've said, we can't do X or Y because of the charter. Like, we couldn't have Town Council review of people appointed to the Utilities Commission because the charter doesn't allow it. It just came up tonight about the employee question. We can't, we might not be able to do this because the charter doesn't allow it. So it. At least at us, as representatives of the public, our hands have been tied in certain situations because of. The charter not allowing us to take certain actions that we might have wanted in the interest of transparency, um, to, to residents here. Um, so, and those weren't mentioned in the specific things that Penny had outlined. But I know in, in my instance, in sitting down with Tom and trying to draft some of these ordinances, some of the things that we have wanted to do. We have not been able to do because our hands have been tied by the, by the charter. So I can, I can tell you that. In my experience, I, I do think there have been some edits that need to be made, whether they need to be sea changes or not. Um, anyway, Kathleen, I see you're sitting here, so.
I just want to say one thing. I think the charter is always going to be restrictive and you guys have been very creative at, at figuring it out. But I don't think it's a bad thing that our powers are limited, um, on bi laws and ordinances by the charter. That, that's the whole, to me, the whole point of the charter is it's supposed to be our guardrails for the separation of executive power, legislative power. Um, and, and other appointed boards. So I think we're always going to run into, uh, you know, like, I'd like to do this, but I can't because the charter says this, but I appreciate what you're saying.
I thought you were a big advocate though of the Town Council being able to approve appointees to the Utilities Commission. My memory is very different because you seem to be really advocating for that and, and we.
I'm not advocating for it. I'm looking for transparency and trying to figure out what the Board of Selectmen did and, and how they did it.
I, I, I'm not. We're drafting the ordinance. That was something you strongly advocated for, that Trent, that Town Council have a say in who got appointed.
I don't remember that Hillary, so I, I'm sorry, I, I, I can't stand behind that. I don't remember saying that. But whether that's, you know, the case, and like I said, I, I don't remember saying that. I, I think that the charter exists for a reason. And I, I don't see the reason to open it up at this time.
Okay.
Thanks, Kim. Kathleen.
Sure. Great. Um, well, I think the timing, first I'll address that and, and then Kim, your, uh, comments. I think the timing is right. Um, I, I do think that over the course of the last seven, eight years, uh, we have gotten some comments about things. I'll give you one example, but, uh, things said, oh, wouldn't it be great if we had an opportunity when it occurs? To consider in a charter revision year.
But things said, oh, wouldn't it be great if we had an opportunity when it occurs to consider in a charter revision year? What some things that might be amended. And remember, it goes before the electorate. So we did find that when a presidential election occurs here in town. We get somewhere close to ninety percent of our electorate participating versus a municipal election or state election. Where we get, we're happy if we can get forty to fifty and so forth. So we get really great turnout and we get a great response. So one of the things, we had five, as Penny mentioned, we had fi- five very important, major things to consider. And maybe no surprise, but the one thing that. So what happens is the commission also makes a recommendation. It says, we put it out there, we don't tell the electorate how to vote. But one of the things we thought that perhaps might change was the charter currently has. That in the board of finance, that you have to be not only an elector, elector, but you also have to be a property owner. And so there were some people saying, well, gee, I live in a, in a, you know, a rental, you know, can we, can we take that as the only board that requires that? And so we put that out on the five, of the five adjustments there, charter recommendations. And the populace said, no, they must be, they must have skin in the game and they should be. And this was part of a whole education process that we took them through. So I'll just give you a quick timeline. So the actual appointment of the members of the charter revision commission in two thousand and fifteen was in September. And we immediately went to work right after that. So it was the town council that worked together to figure out who those members are going to be. We were sworn in in September, immediately went to work, went through the list that Penny said. We were broke into teams and were assigned different groups, whether it's fire, police, DPW, et cetera. Got some great feedback. And then we craft, we spent, I would say, the better half of February through April. Putting the document draft that that the first selectman has right now and shared that with everyone, just to get comments. There are quite a few changes that didn't require a vote from the populace. So there, those are also listed in that document, you'll see. So it it's a real cleanup, if you will, of going through the charter. I'll give you one example. Obviously, very significant ones that Penny raised. I'll give you one example that we did, that we put before the electorate. And that was involving the town council. Up until two thousand and sixteen. The voters could only uh vote for four members, even though six people were running for the seats on town council. And quite often, it could have been seven or eight people running. You're only allowed as a voter to make four votes. So even though six seats are happening, so we put this out, should you be allowed to vote up to six members? Six doesn't have to be the number, up to six. And the populace said, the electorate said, absolutely, it should be six votes. I would argue that the same should be true for the board of selectmen. Right now, there's two seats for the board of selectmen, not the first selectman, but the board of selectmen. You can only have one vote. You can have three, four, or five people actually running for selectmen, but you only get one vote. There's two seats. So similar to what we have in the town council, similar to what we have the board of ed, same thing. You you should be able to vote for the number of seats that are up for election. I would, that would be a simple suggestion as one of the charter changes.
What are the criteria for which items? The commission prefers that have to go out for a vote versus those that don't.
So it's a charter change.
Well, aren't we, are we talking about charter changes?
I think it was just small language.
It was language changes. We we took out he. Minor changes and you'll see those in the document as well.
If you're changing the board of finance to an elected position, that's.
That's clearly one that needs a vote. Yes, exactly. And we put that out for the populace as well. So we published the draft. People can comment on it. We got lots of comments when we had the final one. Every, there was no member of the board of finance on the commission, but we met with every single member of the board of finance. And so that, because that was a controversial question. And so it's, it's, everybody's involved. It's so April, the draft came out and we spent the better part of spring and the summer educating the populace. How many, how many public meetings did we have, Penny?
I don't remember how many, but out of the public hearings, there were changes that were proposed. And then back to the committee and the changes were again, you know.
It's like putting an ordinance together. So it comes back several times.
That much money, huh? It was my impression from last time that by the time it came to the public vote. That the the public was very well educated on the questions and understanding the proposals. However, I'm thinking very early in the process, if I were to go out to the general public now and say, how do you think we should change the charter? How would they ever know? So I.
You have to ask them specific questions.
Right. Yeah, so I'm I'm comfortable with the fact that we're. Not going to the public, at least to ask them, and it would be perfectly appropriate to ask them, do you want to do it at all? But it the specific things kind of have to come from people that kind of know the process.
I'm sure Penny has as well. I've had several people that give us ideas and suggestions about things in the charter. So, I mean, I wouldn't say.
I think that, I'm sorry, Kathleen, I mean, I didn't mean to cut you off. And I appreciate your perspective. It's tremendously educational. So thank you. I my my concern is not, I think we should proceed with it, but I think we need to move a little bit slower. Because what I'm hearing suggested is that let's take thirty days to come up with what we think should be changed. And then start coming up with how we're going to pop, and not from you, Kathleen.
No, but that's, that wouldn't happen.
You start with the list that had been left over from two thousand and sixteen. But then the commission itself comes up with other, other topics because they have sit down conversations with. Every member who's elected or appointed in boards and commissions.
So that decision is just what should go, what should be continued to be considered from that list. That's what.
It's it's just a starting. Through all those other people again, because you have. People who are working a system and see things perhaps a little bit differently. Or processes have changed and they say, oh, wait a minute, I've got a stumble block here. I can't move.
Right. My my concern is this more engagement now with the community that we are going to move forward on this path. Things that the town council is considering recommending to the charter commission for them to kind of set the table and the charter commission will be populated at some point. But I I don't, especially with how we're going to populate their commission. I think there needs to be wide community engagement. I think we need to develop a set of criteria and qualifications to sit on that committee. We have to figure out how many people we want to post. I don't like the concept of kind of an insider baseball. Well, I know so and so, and they were on this back in the day and they should be on here now. Like, you know, there's plans and we all go to the coffees and new Canaan coffee. We're out in the community. There's fantastic organizations in town. We have a very engaged community. And I think highly, highly, highly educated and skilled electorate. I think that many of them I hear send us emails. I speak at the various, you know, opportunities out in the public. They're already engaged on a lot of issues. Eight thirty G is one of them. You know, I think that I I want a a set. Qual, a list of qualifications. I want to disseminate it out to the community and and have them engage us to say, hey, I'd like for, to be considered for this. I just don't like insider baseball. Let's just grab this guy or this person or this, you know, person over here. I really believe. We need to harness the massive talent and engaged community that we have.
I agree with everything Mike said and what's been said at the table, but one of the things that I would like to see is a change. And not have the same or anybody from the previous committee serve on this. It should be a pair of fresh eyes all around. And I think it should be more people involved in the community. That in the community, I mean, in the, in elected or appointed office that knows you and are working for the town to really make recommendations that work. That's my feeling.
As a, as a new member, I I'd like to see the statutes that Tucker talked about. I'd like to see the charter revision document. And I'd like to hear from the public before we make a decision. So are you planning on trying to vote on this tonight?
No, no, no.
Oh, okay.
This is, this is not even, this is like half a baby step tonight.
Okay, so I feel like I need all that. And then my other question, Kathleen, when you met with all these people, are these all public meetings where the public? So when you interview someone from the board of finance, that it's noticed and people can listen to the interview?
I I think more so now than than perhaps we were, because it was always two members of the the committee. And so as much as we have to going forward, because under FOIA requests, even if you're a subcommittee of the commission, you're going to have to notice it. Just like you do by laws and ordinance.
So that's like hundreds of interviews and hundreds of notices and in.
Yep, we'd take a day and we'd say, okay, you're on at nine, you're ten, et cetera. And you publish it and people would turn up and.
The last one in terms of publishing transcripts, that it was private or something and that wasn't published.
Go ahead. Do you want to say anything about it? No, I I think the process is, it's, it it shouldn't be a problem. It's something that, I mean, I would argue that. Having people representative on on the town council there, they've been through the process, you know how to host a meeting, you know how to post it, et cetera. I would say that having both seasoned town members of town bodies as well as the representatives from the populace are important.
Yeah, no, I would agree. But I'll only, sorry.
Absolutely, but one of the things that I learned through the past process, not only was, was the town fine. Through FOIA and legal representation needed to be paid, but also that these meetings were held privately. And it should be part of the wide discussion that everybody hears the pros and cons.
Absolutely.
I'm totally against the way it was put forth last time. Because there was no substantiating evidence as to what direction or what really was being said or or recommended. So it, I want it to be an open and transparent process where there are no surprises.
Absolutely. Agreed.
Yeah, the good news is. Unlike, oh, sorry. Go ahead, Luke.
Okay, thank you so much, Steve. I really appreciate that. And I hate not being in person and and even the way the the audio comes through. I I agree with everyone's comments. I mean, I think this is a great collaboration. I think this is a step forward. I think this is a very positive conversation. I I think, you know, which we've kind of applied as the town council as a whole, all of us has, is holding ourselves to. Specific process and procedure, transparency and and communication with the public. And I think the results have been, you know, outstanding. So, you know, I I think all the comments were extremely appropriate. And I, and I definitely think that we should go into this eyes wide open. We don't need to rush to do anything. I think we need to, we should follow a process procedure. And it's an enhancement and it's a very, you know, appropriate next step. So I I just wanted to lay into that. I I think a lot has been said and I don't want to reiterate and and be redundant. But, you know, I I think it's important that, I'm not going to say slow walk this, but make this a very focused and calculated approach.
Thank you, Luke. Appreciate it.
I just want to say one thing. I I agree with the idea that it should be transparent. Absolutely. If someone wants to be involved, it should be, you know, it should be out in the open, hundred percent. I would have to say a lot of people don't have time to do that. And that's why they elect people that they trust that are going to, you know, be taking on this process. So while I think we should absolutely be transparent, I think we have to realize that. People aren't going to be part of all of the sausage making, but that's why we're elected. We're trying to act on behalf of the public and do what's best for the public. So while it should be transparent, I think we have to understand that not every single person. Is going to be involved every step of the way. And that's, that's just, you know, something I think we just need to think about. In terms of, you know, whether it should be. Eight or twelve, I mean, I think there are some really good points made about having, you know, massive participation. During an election year, like a presidential election year, that's one thing. But waiting twelve years, I mean, I, you know, so much happens, so many, you know, there's just so much that happens in that timeframe. And there's so many good examples of charter revisions that we already think, you know, many people already think should be considered. So I don't, I personally, I think this is the right time to be thinking about this.
Tucker's going to verify that, but I don't think you can go past ten.
There you go.
So.
The wording, I believe, says that every decade, we should bring. The issue before the council to decide whether or not there's enough to have a commission.
So that, that's, that's the ten years. You have to decide it, right?
So there's still needs to be.
On and before November twenty twenty six, or at least every ten years thereafter. The town council shall consider and act upon a resolution calling for the establishment of a charter revision commission to review. And if necessary, amend the charter. The process of initiating a charter revision commission shall be governed by seven dash one eighty eight of the general statutes. So it was not mandatory, but that was, that was an adder. This time because there was nothing in the former charters that kicked off having a review.
Not matter, not mandatory to actually decide to do the revisions, but to actually think about it. Yeah, and to review it. And I just think about, I mean, in a corp, this isn't a corporation, but there's a reason why they do five to ten year plans, you know, because things change. And we need to react and we need to evolve. And so I, yeah, so I, I'm I'm in favor of it.
Are we saying, how many, how many people were on the commission last time? And the maximum is fifteen? We should have fifteen. I just, I'm gonna say that now. We have nine people on utility commission. We should have fifteen. We should have the maximum.
We could even have, we could even have unaffiliated voters.
Okay, well, whatever the number is. To Mike's point.
Can I make a few comments?
Inch deep and a mile wide. Let's give Kevin a floor here.
So I I support doing it this coming year. There is a lot of stuff that changes and and there's a lot of things we can consider. One big change since the last time we did this, we didn't have Zoom. And the assembly is going to adopt the new FOIA statute this year to accommodate the fact that you can use Zoom for meetings. And we'd have every meeting recorded. I was on the town council in two thousand and sixteen. I attended every meeting of the charter revision commission. I don't recall a lot of members of the public being in the room, because that's the way it is.
They weren't welcome.
Well, that's unfair, Christina. That's totally unfair.
I mean, they're, they're all noticed and what it, what, I remember an ebb and flow, like if it was just a working meeting, it was kind of like, you know, nobody wants to listen.
There were fourteen full meetings. There were public hearings. You know, this, this document tells you exactly how it was done. So again, but again, the big difference is Zoom, all the meetings can be recorded, all the news can be recorded, they'll be on the website. So totally transparent process. We didn't have Zoom back then and we didn't have, you know, the public didn't show up for for meetings, but.
Those meetings were recorded, though, so you could go back and look at sixteen, we were recording in fifteen, right?
They were held in the.
Only audio.
Well, but people can. So we don't have that issue going forward.
No, but we don't have the tapes going back.
But what Kevin is saying is that now for this process.
Not looking back.
It will be more transparent.
I would also say that, you know, by participating, for example, I remember the old charter had that the first selectman could break a tie on PNC. And I said to Ira Blum, how can that be due process? You know, nobody can overrule a PNC decision in New Canaan. In Westport, the. The representative town meeting can can overrule PNC. There's different ways of doing it, but it made no sense to have the first like, be able to break a tie. On PNC, so that that came out. I would also say one thing has been discussed, we've been discussing it for quite a few months, is the role of the first selectman and whether, whether or not we had changed the form of government we have. Because the job of first selectman has become much more, much bigger than it formerly was. Other towns have gone to town, town administrator forms of government. Darian, Wilton, Newtown is studying it. And I think we ought to seriously think about changing the role of first selectman. And and a town administrator. Not going all the way to town manager, which is a totally different form of government. And that doesn't have to be done by charter to, you know, go to a town administrator form of government. But anyway, that's the kind of thing that I think seriously has to be considered.
Excuse me, the town, the town charter allows the board of finance to appoint a town manager. I don't know if that's the actual.
Not a town manager, no.
A town what?
Well, the administrative officer is.
Okay.
Administrative officer is not a town administrator.
Well, we had a town administrator when Dick Bond was here and it, he left at the end of Dick Bond's term. Yes.
Peter Murphy, Peter Murphy was administrative officer, but he was. It all depends on the relationship and the and the experience of the.
Correct. Well, it depends on who you hire and.
But again, a town administrator really, really does sixty percent of the job I do right now.
Well, the thing is that we had a first selectman, board of selectmen and a town administrator.
No, we didn't. We had an administrative officer. Big difference. The town administrators normally have degrees in public administration. They have much experience like the. In Wilton, they hired the thirteen year first selectman from the town Bethel to be their town administrator. So it's it's a much, much different role. And then in the case of the Darian, I think the town administrator makes a hundred eighty five thousand dollars a year and the first selectman makes a hundred ten thousand dollars a year. It's a policy and a political role. It's not a, it's not managing the town. So it's, you know, that's, I think we seriously ought to consider that.
Can you, can you talk about?
Can you, can you talk about why?
Pardon me?
Can you explain why we should consider it and what, what?
Because this job has become too big. I mean, when I go by West Coast meetings during COVID, everybody said this job is crazy. We had the first selectman of Western resign because it was. Too much pressure during COVID. So.
All right, so you can tell this is gonna be easy because. Have this kind of discussion already, so. It is, it is healthy. It's very. It is very healthy, very healthy. Uh, just getting back to the video though, I know the charter revision committee met in the boardroom, which wasn't videoed. But there are videos of presentations that they made to various bodies, including town council. So, and you know, that, that's some research that we can do to try to. Watch some of that coverage of how we did it and, and sort of remind ourselves about the, the whole process. Because the charter revision commission would report to the council as far as process, where they were, all that stuff. So this would be like an ongoing. Report, okay, where are you? What are we doing? And during those meetings, you had. Folks show up, give public comment about why they support an issue or why they don't. So there was a lot of give and take from the public. But, you know, it is a lot of work and it is a long haul. And again, it's something I, I, I think we should do. Uh, it's just a question of how we, you know, fifteen, getting fifteen people to raise their hand to do this. And do it right is, uh, that, that's definitely a, a task. So, um, it's not something that's insurmountable.
But it's, it's a good idea that Mike brought up to advertise and invite people.
I mean, we, we, just using the, the two commissions that we just set up, the amount of folks who raise their hand and volunteered, I mean, we got. There's nine already, plus we've another four or five on affordable housing. So I mean, that, that's, I said at the last meeting, I think it's the most people that we've ever asked for in one. One swoop. I mean, it's pretty, it's a, it's a lot of volunteers stepping up. So no doubt we can find them. All right. So any other questions for Penny on that discussions? You okay?
I'll just say the, the comment Penny made on the actual charter revision commission, that was new language that was adopted by the, the condition. Did not require a vote by the electorate, but that's the kind of, you know, sort of suggestions and, and what we put forward and it was accepted. And it wasn't, did not require a electorate vote. So, but we did submit all the changes and people could, they're very transparent. Every, everyone could see them. And they were in this published document that went out.
Yeah, I remember Judge Kimes going through it and some of the stuff, you know, the stuff he picked up, just some of the language changes, it's just subtle, but it was very important changes.
Oh, so the, so the Russ Kimes is Russ Kimes' dad?
Dad, yeah.
Interesting. I was like, Russ was pretty happy to be doing that.
Officer at the time, um, Tom Stadler. Literally went through the entire charter and picked up every comment, every misspelling, every grammatical thing that didn't agree. I mean, so there was one, one kind of blanket, um, question, um, before the electorate that kind of.
You accept all these changes, yeah.
I knew it. The reason we're in top three in Connecticut is Tom Stadler.
Great guy. But it's, but it's important because, you know, those of us that have been around so long, just take a lot of the stuff for granted. It's important. Kim mentioned, I think Hillary, Rita, you guys mentioned. And, and Luke mentioned that you guys are new and we need to bring you up to speed. And, you know, some of the stuff that's just automatic to me is not automatic. And I, and I think we all need to remember that. So it's important that we take, take it slow and bring everybody along, including the public. And make sure everybody understands why we're doing this, how we're doing it, when we're doing it. All that stuff's got to get out there, so. Baby steps. Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you.
Then it's got to go to the general government.
Yes. And actually, if Tucker, if any documents that you can get to us, get them on our tablet, that'd be great. That'd give you more homework, but. This is some, something we have to study and apply. All right, uh, next up, committee reports. Updates from committees. Oh my gosh, why do we put this last? Because you guys are always in. So, so.
Do you need to hear more about bylaws and ordinance?
No, I don't, but I. But so a couple of things for you guys that, that are on the list. We still have, this is on the to do list. Um, we've identified a couple of candidates for the library board positions that have raised their hands and say, I'll do it. I'll be a library board member. I'll contribute to the board. Um, but I need to know, both candidates need to know. What exactly is the council looking for in terms of when they come for their quarterly reports with, why the MOU? What is the, what is the language? They like to have guide rails for, for them and then for their replacements eventually. We need to. Give them specifics. The two folks that have raised their hands are Doug Stewart. And Mark DeWale. And, uh, so, and I think you, everybody knows both of those folks.
I don't know Doug Stewart.
Uh, think of, think of the grocery store, Doug and Alex.
Oh, okay.
So, um. There, they've raised their hand and say they will do it on both sides. So that's good news. So, but we need to put language in place. Uh, that sort of describes what the job is because we've kind of loosely. Said, hey, we're gonna have two reps at large for, on the, uh, on the library board, but we need to say, okay, we need, what we want you to do is give us a. Quarterly financial report, whatever, whatever that report is, the components of report. So they have a playbook going forward as well as the next council. And, and the library board. So that's on the list of bylaws and ordinances.
People, people need to understand what this, what these people coming on to the board of, of trustees of the library. What the expectations are from our side of it.
Correct.
As well as the trustees libraries. From the trustee's side of it, if I remember correctly, in the discussion, it was very clear that these members are members as trustees of the library.
That's correct.
With all of the responsibilities, expectations, you know, committee assignments.
And that's what's taken a while because we're, we're asking, we're asking them for.
Commitment, everything.
Well, so we're asking them to do all that stuff for the library, all that stuff. And on top of that, come to see us, you know, a few times a year. So that was not an easy, uh, an easy sell as you would imagine.
Well, do we have to? Do we have, would we need to set forth in our job description? I mean, presumably it's a two-way street. The library would have to approve it as well. So do we need?
Yeah, they do.
They have to approve the nominee, not approve what we're asking them to do.
That's not what I'm saying. Sorry. I'm saying the library has to approve the, the nominee. So we don't need to set forth what the library requires. We just need to set forth their obligations to us.
Right.
We don't need to say. That we draft anything about the library because they have to approve it on their end. So we can leave that alone, right?
Yeah.
Steve, Steve, can we see the MOU where that, those roles are part of the MOU to see how that's defined? I don't remember, uh, uh, criteria that the people who were reps.
There wasn't. All we said was they're two members. We, that's why we.
No, it's in the MOU. I remember looking at it between the library. It spells out like the agreement between the town and the library about those roles. And I don't remember seeing anything that says that the people have to contribute ten thousand dollars a year to the library. I, I just wanted to look at that original agreement as to, you know, it seems like it's kind of morphed. Maybe it hasn't. I mean, I looked at it two years ago. I haven't looked at it and I don't, I don't have it anymore. So I would love to see that original MOU that says, you know, because if they were put there for a reason, I guess. And, um, it would be helpful to know how it was defined in that written agreement, that legal agreement. And then that will help us formulate, I think, what we're asking for.
So that's, that's bylaws and ordinances. So. So if we're gonna run with that, so can we ask people to send all your thoughts, a hundred percent of them, as to how you think what the responsibility should? What do you want out of these people?
Can we see the contract first though? No, it's not on our tablets. It's from two years ago and there is a contract, an MOU that talks about these roles. And it's just, I think we need that as a springboard. Bylaws and ordinances doesn't, doesn't have it. I don't know if Tucker can find it.
It's.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's up. Yeah, it resides on the website.
Uh, on our website? You mean in our tablets?
No, on the town website.
Okay, yeah, I don't know. I don't know where that is and what page number. It's a very long document. Yeah, could you send it to us by any chance? That'd be cool. Cause I feel like we need to see that first and then I, you know, if it's in a legal agreement, I mean, I don't understand how the library can ask for people to contribute ten thousand dollars. It's supposed to be a representative from the town, not, not a, not a.
Board members. So by, by, by the fact that they are, are, you know, trustees of the library, it, it's defined by, by what the library has.
But I don't ever remember it saying board members. It says town council representatives to the library. It didn't say. That's my memory.
Your memory's wrong.
Okay, well, that's why I just want to look at the.
You'd want them to be, you'd want them to be board members too, though. That's the whole thing.
Well, I, I don't know if we want them to be board members. I mean, they're supposed to be representatives.
No, no.
Reporting back to the town council.
They could be nominated by the town, but they're, they're full trustees.
Yeah.
As long as I just see that.
By the town charter, I'm an ex- ex officio trustee.
Yeah.
Of the library.
Right.
But I'm not a full trustee.
Right.
I think it, so the town can nominate you too.
They would have, the standing that these two members would have would be much greater if they were trustees. I mean, they, you know, they, they would be coming in there as like, who are these people?
A full member.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, it just prohibits a lot of members in the public who don't have the means to contribute ten thousand dollars to represent, uh, to town council. But I'm gonna look at the original document. If it says that, there's nothing we can do about that.
Thank you. All right, uh, next up.
No, I was just gonna say, uh, the, that's what the MOU said. It, it really, you're not representing the town council. The town council's nominating someone to represent the, the public, because everybody else is a, is a trustee of a nonprofit that's selected by the, by the.
And, you know, and to, and to Kim's point, you know, if, I'm sure that if the library board had a good candidate, they felt was qualified. They could waive, you know, something like that. I mean, I, you know, I, I don't think they're just hard fast, hey, we've.
Scholarship?
Yeah, we've got a great candidate, but they, they can't get to that level. Well, you know, everybody should contribute. Maybe they don't have to contribute to that level. So I'm, I'm sure there's flexibility there.
So my other question, and maybe this is, I don't know who this is for, but does that mean that the meetings will then become public if you've got two representatives from town council?
And.
No.
Even though they're, they're representing the town.
They don't.
Report back that would be.
They're being nominated by town. They're not represented.
When they report back, that's public.
Yeah, yeah. We asked for two extra board seats. So they're board members of the library. They're still obligated to the library, not to the town council.
There are extra seats. They are, they're.
They have a legal obligation to be a full trustee.
Yeah, trustees.
Then why did we do that?
That's what we asked for. It was the ten million dollars that, that got us thinking that way. All right, so, uh, the next thing for you guys and, um. You know, I, I said I would help with this too, is the audit committee language. We still have to tackle that. So we've got a, a full slate there. Uh, charter revision, you'll be involved in that, I'm sure. And part-time workers, if, uh, that's the other thing.
So bylaws and ordinances, we have the library board position.
Yeah, our, uh, audit committee language, uh, part-time workers and charter revision possibly, but that's, you know, we're pushing that off of it.
Where does the historic review committee stand?
Well, there's, it sits with the planning zoning. We're waiting for them to analyze the proposal because their role is much more significant than ours.
What are you talking about, Tom?
Historical review commission.
So, committee.
Committee.
How long has it been there? I'm just curious.
Who? The proposal?
Yeah.
Six weeks.
Maybe, maybe do a little. Where is it?
Cause they're not busy? No, they're, they're not busy at all.
Special meeting.
All right. Could I mention one further thing? See, you called it, uh, part-time workers. This is not the issue. The issues are moving from the chart, from the code, a very antiquated section, which other towns have done. Westport decided to repeal and replace it with a one paragraph, uh, section that says the personnel department shall administer the personnel system of the town. And not have all these antiquated rules to, are in many cases conflicting with our current policies. That's the whole point.
So, well, we'll just call it workers. Forget the part-time. Kevin, was that what you related about Westport? Does that relate to ordinances or charter or both?
That's the, that's the order, the code, code. And then the issue is what the charter interpretation really should be. I believe nineteen sixty language referred to salaried employees, full-time employees. They weren't thinking about part-time employees.
And that you're referring to the charter in that latter, last sentence.
Yes.
But what kind ultimately wording are you looking for to not have it?
Well, again, the, 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 uh, chapter forty-four is very confusing and mostly contradictory to what we, our current policies. And for ten years Cheryl's been trying to get that totally repealed. That's the whole point. It's something we need to do. That's what town council is supposed to do is stay on top of code provisions that become integrated and conflicting with other things.
Yes, but I don't like to write co-provisions that conflict with the charter. So.
Again, and then it's a matter of.
Listen, if you want more time to go, I have everything. So the things that bylaws and ordinances need to look at are the library board positions and setting forth the expectations. With respect to what they need to report back to town council or with respect to their relationship to town council, period.
And that should be a, it should be a short one.
Yes, I agree. Okay, audit committee language. But again, that might also need to.
Yeah, well, so, so the good, the good news is on two of those, we, we're gonna have the town attorney and we're gonna have to have the town attorney involved. So we'll set a date and make sure they can come.
So the third is the part-time workers.
Yeah.
Issue that we were just discussing and the fourth is charter commission.
Yeah, but the charter, the charter, that's, you know, I don't think we're gonna need to tackle that. The three.
Yeah, so that, so, okay, so I'm gonna make this number four and we're gonna box that off. And this is number three. And so we will discuss that.
So we need to set a date. We're gonna want to make sure that a town attorney can attend. Uh, we'd like to have Cheryl there probably too, so.
At our next bylaws and ordinances meeting.
And didn't you mention the historical review committee, commission?
I did not.
And the finance commission? So is that something that we need to?
We're waiting on planning and zoning for historical review.
What's the finance?
What's finance?
I don't know. You wrote, you said it, I wrote it.
I did not hear that. And so I will presume he did not say that. So we're gonna tackle the library, the audit committee language and the part-time workers. Next, and we'll make sure that a town attorney. Will be.
Yeah.
Present and accountable. And that's from one hand, we would.
Historical review came from the historical review, uh, committee itself, not, not from the PNC.
Correct, correct.
They asked, they asked that their charter be changed, which is in the ordinance.
Right, yes.
So that, it's, it's their request, not.
But, yeah, but.
Yeah.
The point I was making is that of the things they asked to be changed, most of them would involve PNC regulations, not, not ordinances.
Steve, just so that everybody can leave here fully informed, um, since Robin pulled up the document, article five of the library's board of trustees. Nomination of members to ensure increased town representation, the library will amend its bylaws to allow for a nomination by the chairman of the town's council. Of two members of the library board of trustees, board of trustees, each as an additional town trustee. Individuals nominated as additional town trustees will be subject to approval by the library board in the same manner conducts when approving any new trustee. The additional town trustees will be entitled to a vote and will be counted for purposes of a form.
Okay, thank you. Hey, thank you, Rob. Thank you for the research out there.
Yeah.
Appreciate it.
Did it too. She sent it to me.
Okay, yeah. All right. Any others, any, anybody that want to load up or bylaws and ordinances?
No.
Moving on. Okay.
About leaf blowers.
All right, moving on to education. Education, just real. Please.
Uh, your mouth is open first, so I.
Just wanted, yeah, I just wanted to chime in at, um, the dome project is going extremely well. It's on target to open in the fall. Their fundraising has been very successful, so they're very pleased.
And I would just add, um, if people weren't aware, their new chairman, which is Katrina Park, Park Hills now chairman, um. Phil Hogan is the co-chair and Erica Shvedal remains. I'm sorry, sorry, vice chair. I thank you, Penny. And then Erica Shvedal remains the, um, secretary. And then I also just want to like put a plug in for the intern program that they have going on right now, which I think is fabulous where, um, you know, high school seniors are able to intern with. Local companies and I think, I think it's a fantastic program and I'm really proud of it here in the canon.
Right. The town's got some good ones too.
Yeah.
All right. Finance and government, Mark.
Well, it looks like. We have to meet for June fourteenth to kick off the. Discussion charter. Review. And until then.
Do we need to vote on that?
Now sends you the list.
Well, I haven't, I haven't had dinner, so I'm sort of. Let's do it. Come on, let's go. Next up, who's up?
All right, Health and Human Services, Kim and Penny.
I don't have anything.
I have nothing.
Infrastructure and utilities?
Nothing.
Okay, a lot, a lot of construction going out there, on, out there in the world.
Like the sidewalk, uh, Owen and Ridge. It's a state road and tire has been trying to get that through for years.
Let's see, Lanius and Rec, Robin, Luke, how you doing out there?
Hi, can you hear me? Sorry. The, the big one from Parks and Rec is Patricia Spogani of the Powerhouse Theater presented, um. And the one thing that's changed is that the potting shed was discussed, which is now part of the powerhouse lease with the town. Originally, it was going to be the black box rehearsal space and children's. Originally it was going to be the black box rehearsal space and children's education area. However, Powerhouse reached out to a theater design company in Norwalk. They had a planning session. They came back with a new campus plan to best utilize the theater. Um, this would be changing the, um, poding shed from rehearsal space and educational to offices for the powerhouse and extra storage. And then what they're looking to do is where there's now the storage annex turn that into educational space and, uh, build windows out of it and a deck which adds six hundred hundred square feet, which would look over Anderson Pond. Uh, so that was brought up to the commission. Um, however, the powerhouse has, uh, about a million dollars still they need to raise before shovels can hit the ground. I have the presentation that she sent and I can send it to the distribution town council. Uh, so that was the big thing from the Parks and Rec. Um, other little things like a proposed awning over the apple cart and meat park and at the pool. Um, there was discussion of some vandalism in Meat Park, which melted one of the slides and John Howe was just waiting for a new piece. Um, the conservation commission was Camp Hutchins Memorial, um, pollinator garden. We're looking to hopefully put it into Bristow Bird Sanctuary. Um, it's being worked on by the Camp Hutchins Pollinator Pathway Group and they're, uh, reached out for Sustainable Connecticut Matching Fundraiser. Um, the next is the pull-off area and sidewalk in front of Bristow appears to be on track, according to Tiger Man. He's just getting questions from Connecticut D O T. Um, Tiger also spoke about the solar panels and updated the commission about the energy that's being produced. Um, on the town's website, newcanon.info, there is real time of, of the, uh, energy that's being generated and, and residents can look that up. Probably the easiest way to find is to Google new Canaan solar and D P W. Um, otherwise go on to the Department of Public Works page and then, uh, and then the other chef was, uh, Chris Shiver presented to us. So we have the information and that's about it.
Thank you, Rob. The, uh, just a, a recap of the Mayfair too. The Mayfair was amazingly successful, but you know, all the, all the recycling and everything that the conservation and planning of Canaan did up there was pretty amazing. So hats off for those guys. I know you.
Yeah, great job. I, I wasn't there though this year.
You mean, everything didn't go to the swap shop?
That's coming. That's coming next. I'm sure we're, we're getting that this weekend.
There's, there was a record number of people. I mean, the weather was amazing. So. All right. Uh, let's see. Public safety.
Uh, the only thing I have is on the police building. I've requested the chairman and his team, uh, come in and update the council on the latest and greatest of the project. So it's full transparency. Everybody knows what's going on, can ask whatever questions they want. Um, so they're not surprised. So they'll be doing that, um, next meeting in June. I've requested for this meeting, but thankfully they'll be at the next meeting.
Which otherwise will be short.
Yes.
Yeah. Next, next, next meeting, uh, you wanna definitely plan the evening. I think we have a lot on our next meeting. Uh, finally, let's see, New Canaan Library, just quickly, um, they have two to three weeks more of demolition, um. They have solar panel installation coming along. Mark Robbins is, uh, helping with that. They were eighty-nine percent of their G M P as of May first. And, uh, uh, there was a, they submitted the G M P for the, uh, legacy building. Uh, and that's it. We'll see, uh, Wolf is probably gonna come in terms of moving at sometime in June is the, is the idea. Um, and that's it. Uh, the only other thing I had on my list was Mike touched on a June meeting. We have, uh, Bill Walbert, N C P D. Uh, but we also, we're gonna meet at the library, I think in June. If we can get that set up. Tucker, that's right. In June, we're still Board of Finance and Town Council meetings will be at the library. So. Actually, which is child, so. Oh, yeah. Good, good.
Is it gonna be videoed?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
And then lastly, just, uh, plug for the memorial, Memorial Day Parade. Hopefully everybody can make that. We all got an invitation. We always march as a group, Ken. So hopefully we can get together for that. And with that, I need a motion to adjourn. Right. That's, there was a couple of things looming in June that tell me that you'll, you'll definitely wanna pack a, pack a, pack some dinner. All right. Motion to adjourn. Uh, we are adjourned and it is only nine oh nine. Mark and Salih.
Only.